All right. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me just fine? All right. My apologies. I don't know what I have going on with my calendar link here and clicking on the Zoom. So hopefully between now and the next meeting, I can try to get some technical answers to that. So I won't be two minutes late. I'm going to call the Monday, July 23rd, 2020 meeting to order. We're going to begin with a roll call. Mayor Mike Fournier here to participate tonight. Commissioner Gibbs? Commissioner Gibbs?
I am here.
Commissioner Perush?
Here.
Mr. Macy?
Here.
Mr. Dubach?
Here.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Here.
Mr. Douglas?
Here.
Okay, we have a full house. There has been a request to go into closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged information. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gibbs. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush. Okay, we're going to do a roll call vote on this one. Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Perush?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We're going to head into closed session. Ms. Schwanger, let us know when we're in closed session. Thank you. All right, everyone. It's 7:30, so we're going to resume the public portion of tonight's meeting. I'd like to thank Mr. Gillum for helping us through closed session on a couple important issues. We're going to begin with an invocation given by me, Mayor Fournier, and then we're going to be following that up with the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'll start with the invocation. Undoubtedly, we are facing the most challenging times of our lives. We are all looking for answers in certainty. Deep down, we recognize in this unprecedented time that answers are hard to come by, and certainty is anything but. Seemingly, everything has become divisive. Even the simple act of wearing a mask to keep others safe and show you care about another person. Perhaps to overcome what appears to be one of the greatest periods of civil dismay in recent history, we need to engage differently. Instead of judging each other, even as right or wrong, maybe we judge our actions on whether they are divisive and hurtful or uniting and helpful. History is less likely to judge us as individuals and will certainly judge us as one. What will future generations say about us? What will we leave? We will recover. We will heal, and we will move on, but it will take all of us. Amen. I ask that you stand if you can for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Okay. We've heard from Mr. Gillum and from Ms. Schwanger that we have a lot of public comment tonight. Over 100 public comments have been left, and it seems most of them are dealing with agenda items later on the agenda, items 13 and 14. And right now is the time that we have public comment. We play all those. I think what we want to do at this point is we have some public comment, I think five or so, that are unrelated to those items. And so we're going to have about three to five hours of public comment tonight, and that's great. But I think it's important that we perhaps listen to the five that are unrelated to those items, get through, as was recommended by staff, get through the city business. And then when we get to items 13 and 14, we begin the commencement or re-engagement of public comment again for the ones that are specifically related to item 13 and 14. So I don't know if we need that, Mr. Gillum, in the form of a motion or if at this point, if there's no strong objections to that method, I think we can proceed that way. Does anyone have strong concerns or objections to moving forward in that way? Okay, so everyone's going to be heard tonight, but we just have a few items that, you know, hopefully we can address for the people that are on the phone for items 10 through 12, and we can address those, and then we can really focus on 13 and 14 with the public comment associated with it. So at this point, what I'll do is, Ms. Schwanger, if we can play the five or so public comments that are seemingly unrelated to items 13 and 14 at this time, and then take a break, move forward with the agenda, and then we'll commence with the rest of the public comment before we get to item 13.
Mayor Fournier, we have four that are completely unrelated and one that is a hybrid message. It has the marijuana issue, but also a second issue that the resident was concerned. So I will clear those for you now.
Okay, thank you very much.
My name is Bob Luxon. I live on Greenway, just off of Normandy. I was calling in a response to the viaduct at Delmarin and Normandy. I don't know if it's the city's responsibility or the flames. They need to be cleaned up. Also, a number of the neighbors around here have commented, and I said I would get in touch with you to say, hey, maybe you can put some pressure on the street underneath is bad. It needs to be painted. They did a great job on the one on Benjamin. But something needs to get after them to cut the weave and everything. It's all around there. Thank you very much.
My name is Rosalind Lizer in Royal Oak, Beverly Hills. I'm commenting on two issues. The first one is the marijuana stores on Woodward that are planned. I live probably two blocks from Woodward. I'm very concerned about that. I don't want people coming around here buying pot. One of my main reasons is I think I've read studies in Colorado where traffic, car accidents have increased since pot was decriminalized there. And I think Woodward's a danger enough street. I had a car totaled on Woodward in 14. I don't want, I don't want people lighting up after they buy pot. And I know you're not supposed to do that, but I'm sure people go to liquor stores and they open up that liquor bottle as soon as they come out of the liquor stores. I think it wouldn't be great for the neighborhood, for our young students, and for the traffic accidents. Next issue, Sacra. We're paying tax dollars to have it open. The people are there. It's outdoors. The workers are already there, and I don't know why we can't dispose of our plastic recyclables and our styrofoam things there. It's outdoors, and it seems like if they're there anyway, what's the harm? And again, please, no to all these marijuana stores. If you want to keep it downtown, fine, but not along Woodward. It's too residential. There's too much traffic downtown. You're closer to the police department, and things can be maybe managed a little bit better there. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Louie, 1-5, 1-6 North Maple. Just a few of my thoughts today. Violence, misinformation, and downright lying do nothing to advance the cause of recent protests. Statues being removed or torn down. It's our past, flawed as it may be. We look like a third world country. What's next, a Statue of Liberty? We won't teach history in school anymore. There won't be any. You can't wish your opinion without offending somebody or having it twisted or taking it out of context to bolster someone else's agenda. Free speech has been quashed. And the politicians, they don't care. They're so far removed from us little people. Like George Carlin said, it's a big club, and you ain't in it. They have their own kingdoms, and if anything threatens those kingdoms, they just make new rules to cover themselves. They'll blame someone else. The new guy, the old guy, the House, the Senate. We had a black president for two full terms. Nothing changed. The House wants Ford to stop making police vehicles. Jeez, what next? I think I could hear the commission weigh in on some of these things. We'd know who to vote for or not next time. Getting older, we always would laugh and say, you know, when the feces really hits the fan, we'll be dead. But I'll tell you, the feces is coming a lot sooner than we anticipated. Thanks for letting me rant. Appreciate it.
My name is Michael Aquilina, and my wife and I reside at 501 East Third Street in Royal Oak. I'm calling in reference to item 11 on tonight's agenda. Construction of access road leading to private parking at 217 Nos. According to information included with the agenda, the city of Royal Oak staff met with the Keelers on June 25th and decided not to change the location of the access road slightly to the west of its original position. I would just like to say, it would have been nice if Mr. Twing or someone on the staff would have taken a couple of minutes out of their schedule to let us know by a phone call or an email of their decision. They could have explained why the road couldn't be moved even a few feet to the west as requested in our original letter to the planning commission and also our voice message to the city commission on June 22nd. Especially upset since I spoke to the Keelers in person on around June 24th, and they stated that they had no objection to moving the access road to the west. According to the letter from the community development department to the city commissioners, the petitioner has requested that a vinyl privacy fence replace the original plan for a row of arborvitally trees. We strongly object to this change for the following reasons. The vinyl fence would not be aesthetically pleasing to the eye. The vinyl fence would not allow noise and pollution from vehicular traffic to dissipate, further interfering with our right to use and enjoy our property. The trees would also absorb some of the carbon monoxide emitted by cars on the access road. The vinyl fence would make it feel more like a prison environment from our perspective. Finally, we believe that if the city commission allows the petitioners to make comments specifically about what he said to or about us, then we should be given the opportunity in real time to respond. For the record, we did meet with Jim Keeler prior to the construction of our garage. And at that time, he said that we could use his property as an access to our garage. Otherwise, we would not have built the garage. Thank you very much for allowing us to comment, and please stay safe.
My name is Claudia Saliba, and I am president of the New Edge Figure Skating Club sanctioned under U.S. Figure Skating. For the past 10 years, the New Edge Figure Skating Club has made its home at the John Lindell Ice Arena. Our club has approximately 150 figure skating members that skate throughout the year at John Lindell. On behalf of our club members, we are asking the city commission to reach out to the governor's office and ask that skating rinks be reopened. While we understand the health concerns regarding an indoor facility, figure skating consists of individual training that can't be controlled. Without John Lindell open, our members will have to seek practice time at other facilities which have already opened, some for as many as seven weeks. U.S. Figure Skating has established protocols for successfully opening in a safe manner for both figure skaters and hockey. Unless many sports practices for skating can only be accomplished indoors. Our athletes are at a disadvantage from others who have already been practicing in rinks which have already opened. If we force our athletes to go to other skating rinks, we run the risk of losing our members, which will in turn result in lost revenue for the ice arena. While asking for a skating rink to be reopened may seem trivial to some, to our members, the majority of which are elementary and high school students, they are trying to hang on to something they feel passionate about after losing so much since March, when COVID began, and having to make so many adjustments in their young lives. The benefits are not only to their athletic abilities, but also to their mindset and overall well-being. We feel the rink can safely reopen under the expertise of suburban sports, which manages John Lindell as well as other skating facilities. So we are asking the city commission to reach out to the governor's office on behalf of the youth groups at John Lindell Ice Arena. Thank you.
Mayor Fournier, that concludes the five messages.
Thank you, Ms. Schwanger. All right, that brings us to item number nine of our agenda tonight, which is the approval of the agenda. There are a couple things that, you know, hopefully we can get put on the agenda today with the motion maker. One is to add Hill versus the city of Royal Oak. And I would ask if it's okay, if my colleagues agree, just a quick discussion, five minutes, on the social district law. I know we've got some stuff from Mr. Gillum and Mr. Bray, but what that exactly means for our city and maybe what we can do there administratively. Well, I know the folks are asking a lot about it. I think it would be great to have a quick discussion on that as well. So if someone would implore that, LaVassar with his hand up?
Yes, I would move for adoption of the agenda with the additional items referenced by the mayor. I would also ask that immediately after consent agenda, that we address two other issues that were brought up during public comment. One would be the status of Sacra and the other being the issue with regard to the Lindell Ice Arena and reach out to the governor with regard to finding some way to accommodate people who can, in a safe manner, practice there.
Second. LaVassar? Okay, the second by Commissioner Gibbs. Commissioner Douglas?
Mayor, I'd also like to add an item to the agenda. Brief discussion about fully implementing our tree replacement ordinance. This is ordinance 77090K4.
Are you proposing that as an amendment to the agenda as proposed? Can we motion by commissioner or an amendment offered by Commissioner Douglas? Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perush. Okay, so any discussion on the amendment? Okay, with none, I'll call for the vote. I got to remember to do this roll call again now. We'll start as I see it on my screen. Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Dubach?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
Mr. Macy? Mr. Macy?
She just rejoined.
She just rejoined. Yes, okay, here, yes. I vote yes. Well, so the amendment passes. Let me make a note here. So the original motion is on the table from Commissioner LaVassar to add both Hill versus the city of Royal Oak, add a discussion on social districts, as well as talk about the ice arena question that was brought up at public comment and the Sacra update as well. Okay, any discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. I'll start with Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
Mr. Perush?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Dubach?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We have an agenda. Okay, so that brings us to, and you know what, Commissioner LaVassar, remind me again, did you want, in your motion, and I didn't mark this part down, did you want to discuss those two items before the consent agenda or after the consent agenda?
Immediately after the consent agenda.
Gotcha. Okay. So we're at item number 10. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda to discuss separately? Okay, the consent agenda now includes or consists of city commission meeting minutes from June 22nd, claims June 30th, July 3rd, and July 14th, approval of purchase orders, approval of license agreement from 531 East Harrison Avenue, resolution concurrent with the Great Lakes Water Authority Industrial Treatment Hall, approval of Kiggle Access Management Company Agreement, approval of tentative agreement where firefighters will report 31, receiving file on action items due in 2020, investment. Is there a motion? Will we motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Perush? Discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Perush?
Yes.
Commissioner LaVassar?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, this brings us to the two additional items that Commissioner LaVassar asked to be added to the agenda, which is, we'll start with the first one, the Sacra update. I see Mr. Filipski's on. Mr. Filipski, I know you and I communicated a little bit on this. So Commissioner LaVassar, unless you have anything to add, I think Mr. Filipski can give us a really quick update on this.
He's the guy to go to.
Okay, yeah, I'd be glad to give an update. It's slightly premature a little bit. It hasn't been officially announced yet by Sacra, but they are seeking, first of all, to open up again the drop-off center on an appointment basis, beginning March 20th. As you know, there's been a lot of talk, they closed in March, early March, and there's been a lot of concerns from the public about it. I can say that it wasn't an arbitrary closure. There had been site safety concerns that Sacra had with that facility, which is primarily a transfer station for the waste haulers and also, excuse me, a material recovery sorting facility. And there's all kinds of traffic going back and forth, and in order to facilitate drop-off, people were kind of dodging in between cars and traffic. It presented a safety concern for a long time, so I think Sacra presented them the opportunity to take a better handle on things, which they were required to do with the social distancing guidelines. That being said, they've been exploring different ways all throughout. We had alternative options that covered most of the bases of things that people could normally drop off there, although they weren't as convenient. So in any case, they reviewed it, and they find that they can allow for this. Now, we'll wait for an official announcement, I suppose, from Sacra, which I expect in a day or so. But they'll be getting to, they'll be getting, they'll begin to allow for appointments for that, as I said, beginning March 20th. So that's good news. It's back open, and they feel that they can do it safe.
Thank you, Mr. Filipski. Any questions, Commissioner LaVassar? Commissioner Perush?
You mentioned March 20th. Did you mean July 20th?
Sorry, yes, March was when it closed down, July 20th, yes.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to clarify.
I had Commissioner Macy, then Commissioner Douglas.
That was my question, too. I heard March.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I just want to say that this morning, we took some electronics recycling materials to the alternate center on Southfield Road between 12 and 13 Mile. It was a snap. So if people missed the drop-off event here in Royal Oak and still have some electronics they want to get rid of, that's the...
Perfect. Okay, any other questions? All right, then that takes us to topic number two, which is the discussion on the request to send a letter to the governor on the ice rink standards, et cetera. Commissioner LaVassar?
Thank you. I would simply move that we direct a letter to the governor asking her to explore whether or not the ice arenas can be opened in a safe manner to accommodate those who need ice arenas in order to practice their skill of figure skating.
Motion by Commissioner LaVassar, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Gibbs. Discussion? We'll go with Commissioner Gibbs.
I just want to say, I am a former figure skater. I spent the 1980s being a competitive figure skater, and these kids need to be on the ice. They're losing skills, and I commiserate with them for not being able to get on the ice. Same with the hockey players. So this is a great idea.
Hey, Commissioner Dubach?
Um, it's not that I don't sympathize with this one particular hobby, but there's still a lot of facilities that are closed for a lot of different reasons. I'm curious why this particular one would rise to the top and why we think this one deserves or needs special consideration from the commission or from the governor when there's clearly a pandemic going on. Is this, is this a top priority that we really need to use our pulpit? And I'm totally cool with using our platform to message the governor on important issues. Is, I'm not sure this rises to that level.
Mr. Macy?
I was sort of thinking the same thing. I just don't know that I have, I don't have any expertise. So I hear Commissioner Gibbs saying that these people need to be on the ice, but I mean, basketball players need to be on the basketball court. I mean, everybody needs to be out doing their sport and doing their activity. And I don't have any special knowledge about ice rinks being safer. So it seems like asking the governor to do that is, you know, responding to a singular public comment of someone who wants that. So if everybody contacts us and says, my sport is important to me, please ask the governor to open it up. Are we going to do that for everyone and with what, with what reasoning? Just like, we'd like this to be open up because these people need to practice their sport? We don't, we don't know anything about, or at least I don't know anything about how the virus is transmitted inside an ice, an ice rink. I mean, I will say, I reached out to our Dillon County Executive about playgrounds a month or so ago when things opened back up. Look, I do have a special expertise in playgrounds, and we were learning a lot more about outside and what the transmission outside. I just, I don't, this seems like a very strange and particular thing to be doing. And while I would love the ice rinks to be open again, I'm not sure what authority we have to ask for that.
Anybody else? Commissioner LaVassar and then Commissioner Gibbs?
Thank you. We're experiencing something that no one, no one here has ever experienced. No one has ever had to deal with a pandemic like this in the last century or so. And we're kind of learning as we're going. And very early on, we had rules that were set that were designed to kind of give us some opportunity to catch our breath, to learn a little bit more about the, about the disease, about the virus, and how to address it, how to deal with it. We set rules very early on, and when I say we, I'm referring to our state government, our governor in specific, that along the way, she has examined, said, well, we can, we can carve out this particular issue and deal with it a little bit more precisely because that's an issue that we determined through the science is not going to be a concern for us, and we can engage in that activity in a safe manner. So this is one that may never have come to the governor's attention. She may not have thought, well, gee, can someone who's out on the ice by themselves social distance and practice and improve their skill set, prepare themselves perhaps for national competition or even Olympic competition? It may be something that she never considered. Along the way, these issues will come up. This is one that someone brought to our attention here in the city. I think it's worthy of bringing to the governor's attention for her to, to see if this is something that can be done in a safe manner.
Mr. Douglas?
Well, I would say that opening ice arenas just for figure skaters, individual figure skaters, puts pressure on the ice arena managers who are now going to be hearing from hockey teams. And so I guess I'm going to turn to Mr. Filipski and ask him for his take on this. I think this, it's important to hear from the... And so I guess I'm going to turn to Mr. Filipski and ask him for his take on this, I think this, it's important to hear from the staff on the subject.
Yeah, I certainly don't, at least, I wouldn't want to be in a position to encourage the governor to change her mind about those things, I would sort of let them take the lead on that, and certainly I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, as for the reasons you described, want to allow or permit some sorts of activities there and some not, I think then we're in a position where we're sort of choosing winners or losers on that, and I think that's going to generate a lot more controversy than not. So I would kind of support that point.
Commissioner Macy?
This is again for Mr. Filipski, and we talked about this, we were talking about the budget recently, but right now the ice arena is shut down, and I wonder about the finances of opening it back up, and yet not being able to collect all the revenue from the normal people who are using it all the time in a more crowded environment than the singular skaters who are using it. I don't, does that even financially work for us, or?
Yeah, I guess I don't know the financials, the particulars of it, but there would be a sort of critical mass that you'd have to have to even make it worth opening, or at least not at an additional cost, so there is a breaking point there, exactly what it is, I'm not sure, but I think opening up for just some functions would actually come at a cost, unless it were arranged such that the fees charged for that would be sufficient to cover it.
I see Commissioner Dubac.
Yeah, given that we don't even know if we could, or would, or should open it, it seems a bit premature to be asking the governor to allow them to be open when we don't even have a case as to why they should be, haven't put any appropriate thought into it, haven't consulted with staff, or anyone that knows what they're talking about, so I'm not going to be supporting this motion.
Anybody else? Yeah, I'd just add, you know, I appreciate the caller, in the request, I know they're looking out for their, you know, singular focus of the business, but like, it was articulated by others here, one, I have no idea what the cost impact is, I have no idea what the health impact is, I mean, I can't just take the word of, you know, a person, a public comment that I've never met, that may or may not be proficient in health and whatever, and I think we've had a consistent policy here with this board, that we're taking our cues from the governor's office and from the county executive and county health, because we're just not, you know, prepared or expert enough to, you know, carve out those unique decisions, and to advocate for something that I don't even know is even in our best interest, financially and/or from a health perspective, I have great reservations, so maybe upon a lot of research and all of that, it's possible, but I just can't make that affirmation, that yes vote, I'm such a, you know, little researched, you know, situation, so I can't support it at this time. So if there's no other discussion, I'll call for the vote, Commissioner.
Me?
Commissioner Gibbs.
Oh, I didn't hear the name. I vote in favor of it.
Commissioner Dubac.
No.
Mr. Douglas.
No.
Commissioner Prush. Commissioner Lavassar.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
No.
And I vote no. Thank you, Mr. Filipski, for taking the audible here.
Welcome, have a good night.
You too. Okay, that brings us to item 11, I believe, which is the approval of planning commission recommendation for proposed residential accessory off-street parking lot for 217 Noel Street. Mr. Twain, with the flashy background.
Yeah, you don't want to see my office. No, the planning, or the city commission did have this in front of you at your June 22nd meeting. It was postponed until this meeting. As I indicated in the cover memo, I did have an opportunity to meet with three members of the Keeler, two members of the Keeler family, and another representative at the site. We kind of looked over it, it was their consensus to leave the plan, at that time, leave the plan as submitted, with the location of the driveway, to the parking lot, and the arborvitae trees along the side. I did get a call later from Dr. James Keeler indicating that they would like to change the arborvitae to vinyl privacy fence, similar to the one that's proposed along the stealth property line. The plan and the resolution that's in front of you from the planning commission recommendation doesn't contemplate that change. I didn't change it simply because I, the planning commission recommendation was what was submitted to you, and so that's what's in front of you. If you wanted to consider the request from the Keelers to change their arborvitae to a vinyl privacy fence, you would have to slightly modify the resolution that's suggested for approval. With that, I think one of the Keelers at least is on the phone, or on, or the meeting tonight, too.
Question for Mr. Twain. Commissioner Lavassar, and then Commissioner Macy.
I wanted to get a little clarification on how this, a couple things, number one is, what is the cost to the city in participating in this development as proposed, that's number one. Number two, I'm trying to get a better sense of how this impacts the neighbor on Third Street, and specifically whether or not their their garage that's behind their house would then be landlocked if this is developed in this fashion.
Well, there is no impact to the, to the city of Royal Oak in terms of financial. The intent moving forward was, if the restricted accessory parking lot is approved through the planning commission and the city commission, staff would send it out, so there'd be some staff time for bid on that parking lot, and then take those costs to the DDA, and ask them if they wanted to cover the cost of that award. So the DDA board would be involved in awarding that contract and those funds. The DDA has been supportive of the project in the discussions with them, they felt it was good to get the 22 spaces that are currently reserved for the Keeler's office operation along the south side of the, or the west side of the courthouse, back into public use. So that's where the DDA's involvement was, it's rather than having those, those parking spots reserved for patients or employees of the Keeler office facility, the psychology clinic, parking in that area, which is part of city property, was to get them out of that, onto their own property. And that, that discussion was also had with the Keelers, and they thought that was beneficial from their end, in the sense of they didn't have to continue to fight for those spots, particularly when the lots used for events, or the farmer's market has a big event, they have trouble keeping those 22 spots for their, again, their patients and customers, so it was kind of a joint discussion that we got into when we were going through the Royal Civic Center project very early on. In terms of access, the driveway, the plan that's depicted in front of you, simply is a paved driveway up to the Keeler's proposed parking lot, and there is a curb cut or a opening that would lead to the current driveway that's available to the property at 501 East Third, to the plan that's in front of you, doesn't cut off that access.
With regard to the DDA contributing to this, do you have a sense of what type of contribution is going to be asked of the DDA?
Well, I haven't, I haven't put an estimate to it, I haven't asked engineering to put an estimate to it. I was, you know, depending on what the final design was going to be, I didn't know whether there was going to be, what types of wall was going to finally get blessed, what type of landscaping was finally going to get blessed. You know, the parking lot may be in $80,000 range, the DDA has actually set aside $250,000 for this project.
Okay, I'm looking at page six of the attachment for this agenda item, which has essentially a diagram of the area in question, and basically, the area in question, area 217, has a little, like, flagpole coming down to the south, and I, it appears that that's where Noel's is, or used to be. Is that an accurate statement?
Well, I don't believe that it's ever been a public right-of-way. It's the skinny parcel that comes down, if you look at the aerial of it, is actually Lot 29 of Assessor's Platte, which was platted many, many years ago. So I don't believe that Noel's ever went all the way through from this segment. And I haven't gone back and found the original platte, but the way it's described right now is Lot 29 of that Assessor's Platte, so it leads me to believe it was never a public right-of-way all the way through. If it had been a public right-of-way and it had been vacated, it would have been split to the properties on both sides, which is another reason why I don't believe it's ever been a public street, or a public right-of-way. So it is private property, it does go down to Third Street, it is owned by the Keelers and the county's record leads up there.
Does it go all the way down to Third Street? From the diagram, it looks like it goes roughly two-thirds way down Lot 501.
No, it goes all the way down to Third.
Okay. And just, so I can get a better understanding, and to paint a picture for everyone here, the folks that live at 501 East Third, they have a garage that's immediately behind their house, on the northern part of that, that lot there, with their access coming up through a very thin dirt driveway that's to the west side of the property, and so, you know, my concern is exactly how they're going to be, how they're being accommodated so that they can reach their garage. You mentioned the cutout, but I'm not seeing on the diagram exactly where those cutouts would be and how they would access that garage.
If you go to, let me see if I can get the sheet number. Drawing, of the drawings themselves, if you go to sheet number three or four.
Would you know what page of that is of the PDF?
Mine's not numbered. Let me see if there's a better one.
Looks like 16, Tim, around there.
16?
Yeah.
Okay. If you can find that one, it'll show the driveway in a shaded color. It'll show installation of a six-inch concrete driveway. Approximately halfway up the driveway, on the right-hand side of the driveway, you'll see a note in a kind of a flare that says, "Install six-inch approach." That approach is for the drive, for the garage that leads, leads to.
All right, so if I'm seeing the approach, the approach would, rather than exiting to the south alongside their house, they would, it looks like they would have to exit into the parking area of this.
They would be exiting on the Keeler's property, just as they do now. But the driveway that's there now is on Keeler's property, it's not on the property owned by 501 East Third. So it doesn't change the means of egress. The drive approach from their garage going west leads to the Keeler's property, and then the two-track or dirt driveway is on Keeler's property. It's about the same approximate location as the proposed driveway.
Do we know how long the garage has been there?
I don't, I don't have that detail.
My concern here is that we're being asked to approve this, and potentially approve a significant expenditure from the DDA, and my concern is that the, that this could render that garage totally useless for the people there at 501 East Third Street, and so that's, my concern is how that's being addressed.
Commissioner Macy?
I just was gonna, but I think this has been covered now, but I was going to ask Mr. Twain if there had been any communication with that neighbor, but it sounds like there's not been.
Not recently, I have met with the neighbor on prior occasions. Probably not for a couple of months at this point, but we did share the plan with them, and I have talked to them, like I said, on a few occasions prior to the COVID-19 stuff, and then emails back and forth, but I haven't talked to them recently.
I feel like, by fire meddling, and I'm including myself in that, it's made things slightly worse, because now there's a privacy fence instead of their arborvitae, which I preferred. Or at least, that's what they're asking for. So I just was hoping that there was some, some glimmer of hope you could give us, that the neighbors are going to work this out. It sounds like in the past, they've been able to work together and come to a common solution, it seems like that's not happening anymore, and I wondered if you had any insight or hope to give us.
Well, it is a recommendation from the planning commission on the plan that was submitted. You have the total authority to decide how you want to modify or approve it. You have the final say as the city commission. They could request that the vinyl fence be put in instead of the arborvitae. You don't have to accept that request. If you wanted the driveway moved, you could tell them to move it west. What I would say is, meaning, and I don't want to speak for the Keelers directly, but my understanding of the reason they did not want to move it, was they felt that the property owner at 501 had sufficient space between the proposed driveway and their property line, which the driveway is probably two to three feet off the property line. But between the property line and the house, there has to be some, somewhere in the neighborhood of eight feet that is grass and some landscaping in it, and again, based on the meeting I had a week ago or so with the Keelers, they felt that was sufficient room for that property owner to add whatever landscaping they felt necessary to provide screening from the driveway. They wanted to also maintain as much space on the west side of the driveway as they could to protect it from snow plowing and other things that may occur to the driveway in the west. So they didn't want to take that buffer area on the west side, make it any smaller. And again, that's my understanding of why the Keelers chose not to move it. Obviously, they're on the phone and they can explain why they chose not to do any other altercations, but that was my understanding based on when we met at, met at the site.
Any other questions, Mr. Twain? Any questions for the petitioner? Any motions, one way or another? Motion to go as recommended, a motion to move everything to the west, keep the ARBs. Any motion, Commissioner Lavassar?
I kind of get the sense that we're still in the spot that we were three weeks ago, and our expectation from three weeks ago is that the staff would reach out to the property owners at 501 East Third Street and see if if we could put together something that worked for everyone involved, but if there's been no communication with them for two months, that obviously hasn't happened, and so I would be inclined that we adjourn this another two weeks for that to happen. With that said, I, one thing I do want to see here is some form of easement or right-of-way for ingress egress, so that the people that live there at 501 East Third Street don't get locked out from their garage.
Commissioner Macy?
Well, if I may, address why, why I haven't talked to the property owners at 501 East Third is, number one, I didn't see a point in the fact that the property owner that owns the property and has a proposal, and has the planning commission recommendation, chose not to make any altercations, or alterations. So if that's their position, there really isn't anything I could get out of the property owner at 501 that would make them any happier because the petitioner does not want to move the driveway. So at this point, from a staff perspective, this falls to the city commission to decide what you want them to do. Do you want them to move the driveway? Do you not? Do you want arbor by day or do you want to let them have the vinyl fence? This really falls to you to make this final decision in that property owner at 501 wants something that the property, the owner of the property that's being proposed doesn't want to do.
Real quick before we go, we have Commissioner Macy queued up, but you know, I think this is one issue here that, you know, pushing it off another two weeks or whatever and having the commission spend valuable time on it. It's really one, you know, property owner and another property owner. The property owner of the Keeler's have the right to access to their property and modify it. But they have to come to us for approval. It sounds like, you know, there was kick it back saying, hey, you guys can figure it out. Clearly that wasn't the case. So now we're put in a position as the grand arbitrators. And we can decide what to go with the planning commission or we can decide to, like Mr. Twing said, you know, propose like solvents with the baby. I would like to ask Mr. Keeler, since he's on the phone real quick, I see Joshua Keeler. I don't, the thing was brought up with the, uh, can you guys hear me? Is my audio kind of messed up right now? Could be, it sounds like this is a little better. We got new, new Jim. Is this better? Let's see. How about now? Okay, now it's good? Okay. Too many kids watching Disney Plus right now, I guess, in the house. I'll say we've been put in the position to be the grand arbitrators right now because the two parties were unable to resolve it. And I guess my question to Mr. Keeler, I see Josh Keeler on. Can you give us a little bit of insight whether or not you have any issues with any sort of legal easement to the neighbor's garage? Is that a problem for you if they use that driveway to access the garage? Can you hear me still?
Which would have.
Oh, there, Mr. Keeler. Okay, not, or Dr. Keeler?
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Originally, when I spoke with the neighbors, I strongly urged them to have their driveway installed on the opposite side of their house, which would have meant they would have full access at all times. They were rather insistent that my property be used for their driveway and indicated that they basically refused to install their driveway on the other side. We have for a number of years now shared that space. I did explain to them at some point we may need that property, anticipating that there would be a number of changes downtown, which we have long patiently gone through. And that time has come, unfortunately. We did meet with the neighbors. We discussed all of this extensively after the last meeting. I indicated that somewhat reluctantly, provided we get a hold harmless agreement, they could continue to use the driveway after it's installed to get to their garage. They seemed open and amenable to that. I hope that explains some of the history. We didn't feel we could move the driveway for five feet because of the danger of snow plows and snow accumulation, either harming the arbor by day or harming the fence. The reason we were hesitant about the arbor by day was that it would be extremely difficult to keep them watered. And I was concerned we might lose them. So I proposed the vinyl fence, which would also shield the neighbors from the parking lot next to their house. I hope that explains some of it. It's been a real struggle for many years. I've been here for about 29 years after the city forced my move. And it's been endlessly disrupted. So at any rate, we'd be willing to do whatever we can do to cooperate. And we have tried, but but we do have to have parking for my staff and my patients. So thank you. I hope that helps.
Yes, it does, Dr. Keeler. Thank you. Mr. Macy?
Okay. Well, now I think all the things that I was going to say have been said, but I'll just re-say them because why not? So I agree with Commissioner Levaser that we were, we sent this away hoping that there was going to be a better resolution that could come of this, this neighbor dispute. But I also agree with Mr. Twing that if you go to the property owner and they are not willing to move, there's not going to be, there's not going to be much you can do about that. And I agree with the mayor that the buck stops here at this point. We can't keep sending Mr. Twing back to do some impossible negotiation. So we are where we are and I will move to accept the resolution that the planning commission sent to us.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Macy and second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion. See Commissioner Douglas and then Commissioner Levaser.
So I just want to be clear. Is that with the arbor by day? Because that's the original planning commission approval.
Yes.
It is with the arbor by day. Okay. And I still want to speak to the motion. The owner of this property has proposed to build a driveway that meets all of the requirements. They're within their rights to do that. I mean, they've, I think, acted in good faith with the neighboring property owners. They've even included in their plan an apron onto the neighbor's driveway or a whatever ramp onto the neighbor's driveway, indicating their willingness to allow the neighbors to continue to use it. We can't dictate to them whether or not they enter into any sort of easement agreement. All we have the power to do here today is to approve a site plan. And I support Commissioner Macy's motion to do so.
Commissioner Levaser?
This is a motion that I want to support, but there's a lot of public monies involved here. Maybe DDA instead of coming from the general fund, but it's still public monies. And so in that instance, I do feel that it's appropriate that we look out for some of the nearby residents. I would, I would move that we amend this motion to make it subject to the neighbors here reaching into an agreeable easement agreement for ingress and egress to the property for the neighbors at 501 East Third Street.
We have a motion, but before I call for a second, I just want to talk to Mr. Gillum to make sure, is that legally possible for us to demand that for a site plan? Mr. Gillum?
I needed to unmute myself. Sorry. I apologize. As I understand, we're not only talking about a site plan, we're talking about a special land use permit for residential accessory parking lot. Is that correct, Mr. Twing?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think we're talking about something different than someone that just meets the strict requirements that would be necessary, for example, for a site plan. You do have some additional discretion with a special land use. So I think the kind of condition that has been proposed, I think, would be consistent and would be permitted as part of a special land use.
Right. Okay. So now I'll call for a second. Second by Commissioner Gibbs on the amendment. Okay. So right now we have an amendment in front of us to, as a condition of the special land use to permit legal access for the adjoining property owners to use that to access their garage if they'll enter into an agreement. It sounds like we heard a few things from Dr. Keeler. So that's the amendment right now. Did I misstate it at all, Commissioner Levaser?
I think you've got it.
Okay, good. All right. Discussion. I see Commissioner Douglas vehemently holding up her hand, followed by Commissioner Perush and then Commissioner Duba.
Yeah, how do we make that work? Do we require them to execute the agreement? Do they, do they register it with the city before they can start any of their work? Just, I mean, how does that play out? I mean, maybe that's a question for Mr. Gillum.
Generally speaking, if someone's going to have an easement agreement, it's going to be recorded with the county register of deed, so it's a matter of record for the future.
So the second part of my question then is, so we will require them to execute that easement before we issue their building permits?
I would believe so. I think it would be a condition of the special land use. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Perush and then Commissioner Duba.
I think that requirement places too much of a burden on Dr. Keeler and especially given the amount of dialogue that he's had with the neighboring property owner and what he's gone through to get to this point and the difficulties that he's had in terms of dealing with the city construction and having to move his business as well as certain areas over the years. I think that's placing too much of an additional burden upon him. I don't think it's necessary, so I'm going to be voting no for this amendment.
Commissioner Duba?
Yeah, I can't support the amendment. I think Commissioner Macy said it well in her original motion that there comes a time when it's literally our job to make a decision. And this motion is basically just saying, we don't want to make a decision. You make the decision and put it back on residents, which is, I mean, a dereliction of duty. You know, we are elected to help interpret the laws, to make decisions in the best interest of our residents and to keep kicking it back to them, saying, I won't vote for anything unless no one opposes it, is a promise to never do anything. So for that reason, I can't support the amendment. I think we've worked in good faith to try and resolve the issue. We have a property owner who has worked in good faith to try and resolve this issue. I think it's time to get it taken care of. So I'll be voting no on the amendment.
Commissioner Levaser?
Again, there's a substantial amount of public monies involved here, perhaps up to a quarter million if I understood Mr. Twing correctly. So I do believe that this is something appropriate for us to consider. And this is something that if, if we determine that the owners at 501 East Third Street are unreasonable in their approach here, we can always subsequently lift that requirement or waive that requirement. But I think at this time, it's something that we should include here as a prerequisite before we approve this.
Commissioner Douglas?
Our job is to approve a special land use and a site plan. Those are, any other financing issues are irrelevant.
Well, I think the amendment, I'm not sure about financing issues or kicking it back. I think the amendment as it was presented was to, on the special land use, to enter into an agreement for access easement for the owners of the property to enter their garage. So did I miss something? I mean, I'm asking that not rhetorically, but just want to make sure we're all talking about the same thing with the amendment.
I just, yeah, I didn't make, I used the financing as justification, but my amendment has nothing specifically to do with financing. It's about protecting the residents there and trying to make sure that they're appropriately accommodated in that block from ingress and egress from the garage.
You're making an argument, not insinuating it was part of the motion. Got it. I'll just give my two cents. I appreciate my colleagues' viewpoints on this in general. I think this is sort of a unique situation that, you know, the city has its hands in from 30 years ago and all the way till today. I have no problem, you know, memorializing something that Dr. Keeler said that he's working with the residents anyways to do it. I think that since they're granting a special land use and, you know, there should be some accommodation for the adjoining property owners when we impact on the potential property owners, when we approve that land use in that plan. And so I think if they were really at odds with the easement, I might take a step back. But it sounds like, you know, obviously the neighbor has the incentive to work with the owner of the, where the driveway is going to go with Dr. Keeler to make that happen. It sounds like they're close to something as long as there's a hold harmless and things of that nature. And I agree, if it gets pushed back because they can't come to an agreement, then, you know, we'll figure it out from there. But I think, given the fact that they've made progress on that, you know, it ensures that, you know, we have some mediative quality here between the parties that has been pushed on upon us. So I'll support it, the amendment, and for those reasons, under the land use. So any other discussion?
Can I ask for, just for, from a clarification item, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Dr. Keeler can simply grant an easement on his property for, for the adjacent property owner to use it for their residential access. So it doesn't need their approval to do that. Where I believe Dr. Keeler is looking for their support is signing a hold harmless agreement so that anything that occurs on his property, they're not going to be liable for. And that, that property owner at 501 East Third may or may not want to sign that document. I think that's where the Keeler's are at in the sense that we're doing this. So I just wanted to make sure that's the commission's understanding of, of the motion for an easement agreement. I don't believe there's any, any need for the property owner at 501 to concur with the easement. The Keeler's could simply give it to them. Am I correct, Dave?
That's correct, yes.
So the only part that would need the agreement is before they give that easement, they're going to want the whole harmless.
Commissioner Levaser?
I'm sorry, the question again?
Yeah, the question is, so there's actually, you know, as a condition, we can have Dr. Keeler grant the easement. Dr. Keeler is looking for a hold harmless. Take the property owner, they would have to agree to that in order for the easement to be in place. So there's no actual agreement on the easement. The question I think Mr. Twing is asking, part of this amendment, is we're asking Dr. Keeler to offer the easement. Then what do we do about the condition of the agreement of the other party to enter into a hold harmless? So, you know, is it a condition thereof? How does that work?
I think it's just a matter of whatever details that Dr. Keeler can work out with the neighbors. If that includes a home, hold harmless agreement, then that's fine and dandy. I don't think we need to worry about that particular detail. My concern is simply trying to find some way to ensure that those residents don't get landlocked out of their garage.
Oh, so the amendment is still to grant the easement and he's free to enter into any agreement with the neighbor for a home harmless or whatever?
I don't think we need to get into that detail.
Okay. Commissioner Douglas?
So we order him to grant the easement and they refuse to hold him harmless. That puts his, doesn't that put his whole project at a standstill?
Then I think we have the option to come back here in a couple of weeks if we believe that the neighbors have been unreasonable in their, in not acting in good faith and remove this as a prerequisite.
Mr. Douglas?
I remain disinclined to get involved in a private property disagreement among property owners.
Commissioner Perush?
I would agree with that. In the history of these two property owners, I just am not very confident that the residential property owners are going to be willing to enter into a whole harmless agreement. And that's going to slow the whole process down. I don't think that's fair to Dr. Keeler. I think he's ready to move forward. I think he's been very patient in this process. And I think conditioning this kind of project in that is unfair to him. So I'm not going to vote for the agreement.
Anybody else? All right, I'm going to call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Gibbs on the amendment.
Yes, on the amendment.
Commissioner Duba?
No.
Commissioner Douglas?
No.
Commissioner Perush?
No.
Commissioner Levaser?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
No.
And I vote yes. So the motion failed, the amendment fails. So this brings us back to the original motion. Any discussion on the original motion? All right, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Levaser?
No.
Mr. Perush?
Yeah.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Duba?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
No.
And I vote yes. Okay. All right. Well, I really do hope that the parties can resolve the access issue due to the vote here today. I think Dr.
the access issue due to the vote here today. I think Dr. Keeler has a, a good reputation of, of being cooperative, and I, and I hope that will, you know, translate itself into a mutual understanding between the neighbors now that we have a approval here to move forward with the implementation of the drive. So, I guess we'll see how this goes. Thank you, Dr. Keeler.
Thank you very much.
All right. This brings us to our next agenda item, which is the approval of CE 420 South Lafayette indemnification and hold harmless agreement. Mr. Twing?
Yeah, there are two, two items under, under this in terms of home harmless agreements and an easement. This all relates to Baker College development that was approved at 420 South Lafayette. As part of that development, several of the adjacent utility poles and the above-ground overhead lines need to be removed and put underground or relocated. As part of the, their discussions with DTE, the alley behind or north of Stagecrafters, behind former Bistro 52, that alley back in there, several of those poles also needed to be modified. And one of the proposed approvals and hold harmless agreement relates to DTE then wanting to put a primary switch cabinet and transformer in that location. So, you'll see the first drawing, an old harmless agreement, relates to that space in the alley. If you're familiar at all with the alley, it's an L-shaped alley that runs east-west, parallel to Stagecrafters, and then it heads north-south behind Lily's Seafood. There is a bump out or enlarged area right at the bend of the L. That's the location where the proposed transformer and switch gear would be installed as part of the removal of those overhead lines. And that equipment would serve the adjacent businesses to that alley. The second request is for an easement and hold harmless agreement in the landscaped area, south of Fifth Street and east of West Street. Basically, on the west side of the South Lafayette parking deck, if you're familiar with that landscaped area, they're requesting the ability to put, again, another switch cabinet on that city property. This is not a public right-of-way, it's actually a city parcel. And so, there is, again, a second hold harmless agreement if the commission supported that encroachment on the city parcel. I believe the hold harmless agreements have been reviewed and approved by the city attorney in his discussions with the petitioner's attorney, and it's here, both are here for your consideration.
Questions for Mr. Twing? Questions for, okay.
This is on the phone, if you wanted to talk to him.
So, did you call me, Mayor?
Sure. You seem very more eager than Commissioner Duba to speak. Commissioner Macy, then Commissioner Duba.
I, I'm just curious, what happens if, if we say no to this?
I'll let Mr. Carson explain the need and the...
All right, Mr. Carson, if you want to answer that question, I recognize you to, to address Commissioner Macy's question.
Okay, great. I'm sorry, I unmuted. I had to unmute myself. This is Steve Carson. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. The necessity for the easements, if we, if we didn't get them, we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to build the project to be direct. The current utilities, as Tim has explained, run overhead, and they run along, they run north and south on the west side of Lafayette. So, they're overhead utilities, and then they cross over this Lafayette Street and go into the alley. Those overhead utilities are going to be removed. And the reason why we need to remove them is because they would be in too close a proximity to the upper floors of the building. The building goes seven stories vertical. So, we couldn't, we couldn't have those overhead utilities that run in that right-of-way. So, we need to put the utilities underground. So, in order to do that, we need to provide a new switch, switch gear and transformer to service the users in the alley. So, we need to do that. And the second one, which is the transformer in the, which is west of the parking structure, again, services some of the utilities in that same area along Fifth Street, which are overhead, and everything's going to be put underground. If we didn't, if we didn't put anything, if we, if we weren't allowed to have the switch gear, we couldn't go underground, and if we can't go underground, we can't go vertical. So, that's how this whole thing plays out. I'll be answering your question.
Any other questions? Commissioner Macy?
Well, I guess a follow-up to that. I mean, so how is this just coming up now? Like, why wasn't this part of the initial package if we always knew this was going to have to be the case? How is this just now coming to us?
Well, unfortunately, it's, this is a process that with DTE, if anyone's been familiar with DT and how they end up providing service, their new service to new facilities, they really, they take, first of all, they take a long time to, to establish that service. And second of all, they really don't get into it until after you have an approval of a building. So, once you have the approval of the building, then they'll provide a, what's called a master of service agreement and a master of service proposal, which is what they did after the building gets approved. So, once you approve a building, you go to DTE. DT provides the master of service, and then they come back and they say, "Okay, you have to have these utilities, they have to go underground." And in, in addition to that, you'll have to service the utilities for neighboring parcels as well. So, while we would love to have been able to do this earlier, unfortunately, the way this utility system operates, typically, this is how it was done. And we would love to, we would love to have been in a position that we didn't have to go underground because it's very expensive. It's a seven-figure process to do underground. It's actually about a million seven to do all of it. And it would be about a 10% of that cost if we could have stayed vertic, if we stayed utilities overhead. Positive thing is that, from the city's perspective, that utilities will be underground and won't have lines running from, across Lafayette Street, won't have utilities on Lafayette Street, and we cleaned it up. But it is an expensive process, and we would have loved to have known about it earlier as well. But unfortunately, working with DTE, they take a while, and they come to you and they provide you with what they say, and there's not an alternative.
Commissioner Macy, I can validate that firsthand when we put our addition on. You know, they wanted everything approved. I mean, it was like chicken or egg, and it was, it was very difficult to manage through. And then we finally got the clearance, and they came out, and they buried our line, and it was, it was a challenge.
That's not very reassuring. I'm going through it right now.
Good luck.
Just signed the contract with them. So, now I have a follow-up question based on that. I mean, that sounds like a huge increase in cost. Does that, plus the advent of coronavirus, make this project still feasible for you?
We hope so. Our project is, the schedule right now is to start staging the end of August, and you'll see activity on the site in September. Look forward to educating. So, yeah, we're about 60 days away.
Any other questions for Mr. Carson, Mr. Twing, or Mr. Gillum? So, we have a recommendation in front of us, these agreements. Commissioner Bruce?
I'm of approval of these recommendations.
Motion by Commissioner Bruce. Is there a second, second by Commissioner Douglas? Discussion? Now, I'll just add, I mean, it makes sense. I understand the process. I think, Mr. Carson, you answered why, you know, we didn't know about this before, and it's just an iterative process. There's always contingencies. And I think, you know, the benefit that comes to the city by approving this is that clearly we get all of these lines put underground, and it cleans up the area really nicely for the neighbors and everything there. So, there is some benefit to us on, I hate to say it, not that this sounds crass, but on someone else's expense. So, I will be supporting this motion. All right, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Macy.
No.
Commissioner Levaser?
No.
Commissioner Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Duba?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs?
No.
And I vote yes. Okay, the motion passes. Good luck, Mr. Carson.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening. Thank you.
All right. This brings us to not our last two agenda items, because we have two more that we're going to discuss after this. We have to remember to discuss social distancing, social districts in downtown, as well as the tree replacement program. Before we begin with item 13, we're going to play the remaining part of the public comment, which could be very, very lengthy. Before we do that, I'm going to take some chair privates, chair of this meeting, to make some comments. I know we have a lengthy public comment tonight. A lot of people called in, and I know the commission is very grateful to hear from our fellow citizens and neighbors about their thoughts on every decision we make, everything we do. It takes into consideration input from so many sources, most importantly, our residents. I'm also aware that there was a meeting last week, and there's been some flyers put under doors. And frankly, when I looked at that information, both presented at the meeting, as well as these flyers, there were some really gross inaccuracies in the, the data that's been percolating around the community regarding the topics we're about to discuss. It almost appear that there's some sort of architect of misinformation out there pushing false information, and that's very concerning to me as mayor, because I know people take time out of their day to make a call, and I've already received, and I know the rest of the commission has received emails with a whole number of things that are coming directly from the source of information that, you know, are patently false. And we need to have a debate as a community on every topic, especially a topic as important as what we're going to do with recreational marijuana. And while we might not all agree on, you know, the path forward, it's important that we agree that we're all looking to the same facts, and that we're all looking to the same truth, and that, you know, we're all using the same information as a community to make decisions and to inform our decision-makers about our thoughts and opinions. And so, I really, and I can speak on behalf of the commission, we're very grateful for the people that took time to leave their public comment. I have a feeling, and I know, that we're going to have a number of comments that are going to be based on information that frankly, you know, is incorrect, misleading, and maybe even dubious. So, I really do feel for the folks that, you know, have concerns, and they should have concerns based on bad information. But the reality is, is that, you know, we get to these topics, we're going to go through a lot of public comment, and then we're going to have to clear up a lot of stuff when we get to, to that point. So, I don't want to, you know, talk further on this, other than it's very important that, you know, we get the right information out there for folks, because it's important that we have conversations that are rooted in good information, not bad information. So, grateful everyone called in, grateful we're going to get public comment. I have a little bit of trepidation that a lot of the concerns people are expressing aren't existent, and, you know, some are legitimate. We hope to discuss it, but, you know, in the future, we got to make sure as a community, we're looking to the right sources of input. So, with that, Ms. Schwanger, I know we have 102 or so public comments left. Do we really have five hours of pub, do we have a time that you can let us know? Because if that's going to bring us into 2:00 AM, maybe we have to look at breaking this up. I, I don't know what the, what the best step is, maybe we listen to all the public comment tonight. Do you, do you have a timestamp on, on how much the cumulative time is of the public comment?
Mayor, for regretfully, I, I do not. Public comment at 6:00 PM, and I have basically until 7:00 PM to prep it, so I cannot listen to every single message when we have this volume in its totality. I would say that anecdotally, most of the comments appear to be over a minute, probably into the two-minute, and then some of them actually taking the full three. I didn't see very many that were just like 15 or 30 minutes. I screened them to verify whether they were full, just about marijuana, or if they had other interests in the city commission meeting tonight. That was my goal when I was reading them.
We just have a number of 100-plus, but we don't know if that's five hours or two. Okay. So, what, what I'll suggest is, we just start going through those public comment, and at any time, if it starts to get really late, any commissioner can kind of make a motion to pause, take a break, do whatever, and see if, I don't know if we want to be discussing these very important topics at 3:00 in the morning. Maybe, maybe that's a privilege of the commission, but let's see where we go, I guess, and unless anyone has any other thoughts or ideas. Commissioner Bruce?
I'm going to put Mr. Gillum on this call. Assuming that we do have this many, we know we have this many numbers of public comments, and it's going to take at least four hours, maybe five hours to listen to all of them, and it's almost 9:00, which will put us into the early morning hours, which is probably not an appropriate time to be debating issues. What is the process for adjourning a meeting or for postponing a meeting? I don't have that part of rubber tools in my head, so I don't know what the procedures are. But if, for example, if we wanted to pause public comment, let's say at midnight, is that something that we could do potentially, or are there legal complications for doing that? And I know I'm putting you on the spot.
No, I think it's within, entirely within the city commission's purview to, to, at some point in time, adjourn further, further public comment on the question. But I think, hand in hand with that, the commission would have to be adjourning any actual, any action on the agenda items themselves. I don't think you can stop public comment, then go ahead and proceed to act on the agenda items, and never hear public comment, or think that you're going to hear public comment in two weeks or something like that. I, I don't think that would be appropriate. So, if you, if you do need to put the brakes on this issue, then I think, I think you need to put the brakes on the entire issue. The only comment I would make is if we do that, then given the timeframe that we're looking at, and the August 15 expiration of the current opt-out ordinance we have on the books, then the commission should give some thought as to when we'll schedule a special meeting. Because if we're going to have any kind of an ordinance in place, or if we're going to end up extending the opt-out ordinance by August 15, we'll have to get two readings done by very early in August, no matter what the ordinance is going to be.
So, I guess then to follow up, I agree that we should not take any action, and I think all of us would agree that we shouldn't take any action to discuss the substantive issues of these agenda items until we hear all of the public comment tonight that is on, that has been recorded tonight so far. I guess my question is, is would it be possible to adjourn the meeting, let's say at midnight, stop the public comment at that point, and then resume it at a special meeting sometime later this week, at which point we would hear the rest of the public comment, and then also consider discussion on these two issues? Is that, is that structure, would that structure be possible legally? Assuming the appropriate notice for the adjourned meeting?
Yeah, you took the words right out of my mouth. That would be the only restriction or limitation is that we would have to allow enough time to provide the, the appropriate notice of the new meeting date or the adjourned meeting date, if you will, to be posted and publicized.
If we were to adjourn it to next Monday, which is a Monday that we don't have an official meeting, would that give us enough time to act on the ordinance within our timeframe deadlines? Or do we really have to take action tonight on these ordinances in order to meet the timeframe?
Well, if, if we're assuming that we could take action on an ordinance on first reading... Well, if, if we're assuming that we could take action on an ordinance on first reading at a special meeting next Monday night and then take action on the ordinance on second reading in our next regularly scheduled meeting on July twenty-seventh, uh, that would meet the timeframe. To be honest, we could probably even push out the, uh, adoption of an ordinance on second reading as far out as, as following Monday, even August third. But that's the night before any election and I've got a feeling there might be other complications trying to hold a special meeting that night. But we need ten days from the date that the ordinance is adopted until the date that the ordinance will become effective. And if you count backwards from August fifteenth, then that puts you at August fifth.
Which is the day after the election.
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Levaser. Oh, sorry. Mr. Perusch continues. Sorry, I thought you were finished.
That's okay. Um, my view on this is that even if we were to listen to all of the, the public comment this evening, none of us are going to be in a position mentally to be able to debate these issues and to get through the discussions of whether or not any of these proposed ordinances are appropriate and how they might be tweaked a little bit and so on and so forth. So I, I really see that in my mind that if we're going to be able to do this effectively and sensibly, we're going to have to adjourn this at some point, at some point in time and then continue the discussion. Hear the rest of the comments and we continue the discussion at another date, whether it's later on this week or whether it's next Monday. So that would, I don't know that in a, in a motion at which point is appropriate. But that would be my strong suggestion and I guess I would be interested in hearing other commissioners' thoughts on that.
To have one, you know, small complicat-, not small, I mean, complication, but you know, what do we do with the added agenda items at the end, right? So if we, we have the social districts we were going to discuss tonight and the tree, uh, replacement, um, ordinance. So do those get pulled up? Do those get pushed off to the special meeting? You know, what do we do with those? So just a quick FYI, I don't know, Mr. Gillum, if you have an idea of what we could do with those if we get to a point where we need to cut off public comment at a certain time.
I think that's within the commission's discretion. Um, I think you could adjourn or postpone this particular item, that is the marijuana items. One or both, the licensing ordinance, related zoning ordinance text amendments to a future date and pick up and cover the remaining items. Or if you needed to, um, you could adjourn the entire meeting and carry all the items over to a different date.
Commissioner Levaser?
Ms., Mr. Gillum, if we decided to go a different route and extend the sunset of the, uh, prohibition on marijuana businesses in Royal Oak, could we effectively have a first reading tonight for that purpose?
I mean, it's technically not part of the agenda, but it certainly is within the scope of the discussions that we've had before relative to the idea of marijuana licensing. So, um, I don't think there would be an issue if the commission wanted to bring a motion to extend the opt-out as a, on first reading tonight, um, to a certain date. And then we could have, um, an actual ordinance prepared and part of the published agenda packet at whatever subsequent meeting date the commission wanted to take the ordinance up on second reading.
Well, what is a, maybe before we begin the public comment, the, the hours that we're going to have ahead of us, I don't know what, what the feeling of the commission is. Maybe we tackle these, these first two small items. Is it the, the, you know, position of the commission to discuss those two small items now? Um, and then listen to public comment and we get fatigued? Midnight, 1:00 AM, whatever it may be, we cut public comment off and then adjourn and schedule another meeting or what's the, what's really the position? I see Commissioner Gibbs with her hand up.
My suggestion would be to pull the two, um, the two remaining agenda items forward and push this to next Monday, push the marijuana to next Monday. Or the twentieth, I should say.
Commissioner Levaser, you had your hand up, thanks? Oops, I think you muted yourself versus unmuting yourself, Commissioner Levaser.
Thank you. Uh, I was simply going to move that we pull up those last two items and address those now. I wasn't going to address on whether we proceed further on, on adjourning the marijuana related, but I did want to bring those other two items up front here and tackle those first. That's my motion.
Motion by Commissioner Levaser, second by Commissioner Douglas.
Mr., Mr. Mayor, a point of clarification. I, I think there may be three items.
Oh, there's three items. You're right. You're right. Correction, there's three. There's, uh, there's also Hill versus, um, the city of Royal Oak. So that's my note card here.
I, I would correct my motion then to those three items.
Yeah, the remaining items, three. And we have a second by Commissioner Douglas on that, uh, discussion. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Levaser?
Yes.
Commissioner Perusch?
Yeah.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so we'll talk about those three items now and then after those items, we'll move into whatever we want to do for items that, you know. Okay, so the first one that we had was Hill versus the city of Royal Oak.
Mr. Mayor, city commissioners, this is regarding a matter that's pending in front of the workers' compensation bureau. It's a, uh, an action that was filed by, um, one of the employees in the police department, the dispute regarding payment for time off spent and for, uh, medical bills. We had a chance to discuss this matter with outside counsel in closed session. We received a recommendation from counsel would potentially resolve this claim. I would ask that the city commission bring a resolution to authorize counsel to proceed in this matter as disposed in closed session and then.
We have a recommended resolution, uh, moved by Commissioner Levaser as a second, second by Commissioner Perusch. Discussion on this? All right, discussion, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Perusch?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levaser?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so that, um, uh, takes care of that. Thank you, Mr. Gillum.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to two additional items, uh, and the first is dealing with, um, the legislation from the state of Michigan regarding social, uh, districts. I know, Mr. Gillum, Mr. Brake have commented a little bit on this and we've had, um, since then, some, uh, public inquiry on it. And business community has, I think, reached out to a number of us as well to understand, you know, what our position is, what does it mean, what are the next steps? And so I was just hoping to spend just a short amount of time here, maybe, Mr. Gillum, Mr. Brake, you can update the public on, you know, what this means and what it potentially means for Royal Oak.
Well, I can, I can lead off anyway. Commissioners, as was indicated, I, I sent you, um, an email last week containing some information that I obtained from the, uh, state websites regarding legislation that, um, has actually been approved by the governor and is now effective. It's a, a package of bills. The one that really we're talking about now is one that started in the House that allows for the creation of, um, a social district or districts containing commons areas. The creation of districts would be by a local government entity, in our case, by the city commission. It would allow the creation of, for a, of a district, um, that would be, um, adjacent to, um, at least to, businesses that were licensed for the consumption of, of liquor on premises, that is, last year, resort licenses, something like that. Essentially what the legislation would do would provide for the licensees to be able to sell alcohol on the licensed premises to a patron. And the patron could then take the alcohol that they purchased inside one of the licensed businesses and take it outside the licensed premises, which normally you are not allowed to do. Um, and then be able to carry the, the, the drink, um, and consume it in the commons area. That is in the, the, uh, the social district area that's designated or established by the city. There are some restrictions. Uh, there are two, um, the size of container that can be used. There have to be some identifying marks on the container. If you buy a, a drink in, in, in one of the businesses in one of these containers, you can take it out. You can either consume it inside the business or you can take it into the commons area. But you can't take a drink that you buy in one establishment inside another establishment. The, the process that would be involved is the, the city would establish a district. We would notify the, uh, the state, the MLCC. We would be responsible for developing a plan to manage the district. I think that's probably one of the most significant points in this legislation that I wanted to point out to the commission. That if we establish a social district, it becomes our responsibility to manage the district and what goes on inside the district. So that would mean that enforcement would largely become a question for the Royal Oak Police Department. The licensees that were selling the drinks will still be responsible for what goes on in their businesses, on their licensed property. But they are in no way responsible for what happens out in the commons area. We're responsible for that. And that includes the normal issues you have with people that are drinking. And it also includes other issues as to what might be going on in the, uh, the social district in the commons area, um, including questions about social distancing. Once we've established the district and notified the MLCC, then businesses who are adjacent to the social district in the commons area can buy a special permit from the state, which allows them to participate in the program. That's kind of the big overview on the issue. If you have other questions, I can try to answer those. I think the police department is taking a look around and seeing what other communities are doing. Mr. Twing up in planning found that, uh, the city of Port Huron has apparently developed a plan and they were considering that at their city council, city commission meeting tonight. Um, I'm not aware of any other communities in the immediate area that have already established any kind of a district pursuant to this legislation, not yet anyway. I think there are others that are looking at it and I don't think anyone has established one yet.
Go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Twing.
Just going to say, I don't know if, if Mr. Brake has anything to add or Mr. Twang or, I know the deputy chief Frazier is on the, uh, has joined the meeting tonight as well.
Mr. Brake?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I think that was described, uh, very well by, uh, Mr. Gillum. So, uh, uh, on the one hand, the positive side, that would create a destination, uh, would help to encourage a type of a, um, you know, local tourism. Uh, but on the flip side, we would be assuming liability. Clearly states in the legislation, that we have to protect the health and safety of the community. So knowing that going into where we would have to have that responsibility to enforce within that common area, that's just knowing that burden going into this. So I would defer to the, the law enforcement, uh, professionals, what their expertise is. Uh, one option that I discussed with Mr. Gillum is that we take an approach and see what other communities do and, and, um, you know, kind of build on that to come up with some kind of creative solutions. That would be another option to, to consider, but just be aware of knowingly what, what sort of liability that we would be taking on by enacting such a district.
DC Frazier, any thoughts?
Good evening, everyone. Just a, a couple of basic thoughts that we have as a police department is, uh, if, if this was something that moved forward, we talked about some certain areas that should be exempt, um, like police department itself, uh, the courthouse and our parking structures, we talked about. If we did move forward on social district, exempting those areas, uh, some of them for obvious reasons. And then we definitely have to set some sort of end time each night for when the social district would end. So when we go on through the evening. I'd also encourage the city commission to not consider the police as the ones enforcing social distance or, uh, mask issues. I think that's something that, uh, police should not be doing at this time in this, in the social district.
Any other questions or, or thoughts?
I mean, certainly, you know, Mr. Brake makes a good point. You know, it can be advantageous for business. We can spread people out. They can dine. They can have a beverage and if everyone follows the rules, socially distanced and do it in a safe way and, and help keep our small business community going. The challenge is, the better you do it, the more people want to come and the more it has a, you know, sign of success is lots of people coming. Uh, that's also, you know, too much success is a problem as well. Uh, and so, you know, there are a lot of questions about enforcement, uh, especially with social distancing. You don't know who's a household member, family, all of these things. You know, do you charge admissions? Do you only let so many people in? How do you manage it? All of these things come to question. There's other communities that are, are looking at it, but I'd also push it back to some extent on our business community as well to, you know, help us understand, you know, what's good for retailers, what's good for the restaurants. And if this is something that they, they really want, I don't want to be the commission, uh, here that all of a sudden does this and everyone's complaining about it, right? I mean, that would be just a failure. So, uh, I think it's incumbent that we get some information back from the business community about this. But I think we have to, as a commission, show our hand that we're interested in this and this is something, you know, that we, we should entertain doing. Uh, but we need the cooperation of the businesses, uh, to give our staff the very best ideas and proposals if we're going to do this. That's my thought. Commissioner Perusch?
And to me, this type of situation is almost analogous to some of the festivals that we used to have in the summertime. The Clay and Glass Festival, which is now the Artifier and other downtown festivals that we had, but which were canceled this year because, there was no way to maintain the social distancing. Um, and there was no way to maintain any enforcement of the rules that were put in place by the state at any point in time. Um, and this to me would be an analogous situation. I can't imagine that there's a whole lot of locations that you would create something like this other than public rite of ways, um, that are already streets, which are the locations that our festivals would have been in, whether it's Sixth Street or Washington or whatever. Um, and so, because those are canceled for liability reasons, for inability for us as a community to maintain effective rule enforcement for those. This seems to me to fall into the same kind of category. We would have the same kind of difficulty. Um, and added to that, we would have, as Mr. Brake mentioned, the additional liabilities that are actually condoning this type of activity. To me, it, it's, it's too much of a risk to take on. And I, I don't have my ear to the ground in the business community as much as some others have, but I have not heard from any business members that this is something that they're looking for. They were very happy to have the additional parking space that made available to them and a number of them have expanded their businesses out into those spaces. But I have not heard a groundswell of request for this type of, for this type of, of, uh, created area within the downtown. So for those reasons, um, I think at this point we just sit back and watch and see what other communities do. And if there is a movement from the business community to consider this at, at some point in time going forward, then perhaps it's something we can consider. We have to consider that the summer or the season for having these things occur is, is at least half over. So even if we were to decide, yes, this is something we want to do, by the time it actually be put in place, we're almost looking at middle of August, toward the end of August, and then there's not a whole lot of summer left. which which would mean we really couldn't use the whole, the whole concept and make it useful and worthwhile. So those are just my thoughts right now. But I really think at this point in time, we just need to sit back and just see how this unfolds other places and wait.
Yeah, I think those are really good points, Commissioner Perush. And I think, you know, the way I hear how this law unfolded, I think, you know, my first vision of this was that it would be basically expanding the outdoor table service for all of the restaurants in town into the street. You'd have table service only and all of that. But if it's something different where people have the ability to roam around and more like a festival, then I share those concerns as well. Versus if we're really looking for an easy way, a less administratively burdensome way to expand outdoor seating, I think it's a win. If it's something more than that, then we have to be really cautious and careful. Those are really good points. Anybody else? Mr. Brake?
One other thing, I'd be remiss if I didn't point this out. The legislation is, makes this available through the end of the calendar year 2024. So perhaps when we're in a better position and learn from other communities, I would say that this would not be the last time that the commission would have this conversation. So kind of bear that in mind, that we could revisit this when when we're under much more favorable conditions. So I'd just offer that for what it's worth.
And certainly, I would imagine, Mr. Brake, if the DDA reached out to us or the Restaurant Association, my idea is we talk to them about it, right? We wouldn't have an issue with staff, you know, entertaining proposals from our various business organizations, correct?
Right.
Commissioner Dubac?
I think that's a really important point that we can, you know, we can consider this when the time is right. I really like the concept and I see the value. And, you know, a few business owners have, you know, raised it with me, thinking that it would bring value. But especially while numbers appear to be on the upswing, I don't think we're in a position to create a space that's going to be really, really difficult for folks, for individuals to manage, maintaining a safe distance, to keep mask wearing, you know, kind of as the social standard if we create a sort of festival atmosphere. It doesn't feel like the right time to do this, but it's something I definitely want to consider in the future when we know we've gotten over the hump.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Gillum, and thank you, Mr. Brake, for the update. We really appreciate it. And hopefully, you know, people have questions, they can reach out and learn a little bit more about what that legislation means. And they watched tonight, they can understand how we're just waiting and seeing a little bit here, watching the numbers and seeing what the business community says. All right. Thank you. All right, that brings us to the last of the items that we pulled up from the end of the agenda, which is Commissioner Douglas had asked to add an item about our tree replacement ordinance, specifically when it comes to new developments and things of that nature. Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier on our agenda, we looked at the Knowles Project, where they're going to build a parking lot on their property. And the property right now has 35 trees. And of course, once you build the parking lot, you're not going to have room for those 35 trees, let alone the 70 trees that our ordinance calls for. When we approved that ordinance, we, it not only had terms requiring developers to replace trees two for one on their properties, but it also has an option that allows developers to purchase, as it were, trees that would be planted elsewhere in the city. And that subject came up when we, at the Planning Commission, talked about the Knowles Property and we realized that we had never put into place the tools, the mechanism for allowing those off-site purchases. We here at the commission have a tradition of, you know, we don't tell staff what to do or we only do it through collective action. And so I'm going to make them, so the the things that need to be in place according to Mr. Twing are a standard agreement with developers, a fee schedule for tree types, methods of collection and tracking through the finance department. That is, we need a structure by which we can capture that money and make sure it gets spent on trees elsewhere. So I'm going to make a motion that we ask the staff to put in place those tools.
Motion by, second by Commissioner Dubac. Discussion. Commissioner Dubac?
I appreciate Commissioner Douglas bringing this forward. I do not know, Mr., it seems to be here. I thought when we originally discussed this, this must have been, what, a year and a half ago?
At least.
Our intent was really clear. So I'm just, I'm curious how this has not been established. Is it just that a case hasn't arisen yet where that compelled us to create this process? Or was the intent of the commission not clear in establishing this provision of the ordinance?
Well, I think that question can, maybe Mr. Twing can answer that question.
I believe most of the cases that have come through the planning commission have met the two-for-one standard or been very close to it. So we really didn't have a case where somebody was going to need or rely on another provision. And frankly, I think it probably got lost in the shuffle of all the other things that have been going on in terms of putting the mechanisms in place in terms of the other departments.
Fair enough.
Okay. And another part of this is commission's going to have to set the fee schedule. We probably would have to have the, and part of the discussion was, you may recall a report that was put together by, and I can't think of the gentleman's name anymore that was in the city manager's office that did a report similar in this regard, indicating that we also need a arborist or someone that had some knowledge of tree types, the value of those tree types. So it wasn't something that just a member of the planning staff was going to put together.
Well, I think, you know, when we originally had discussed this, when we revised the ordinance, it was because we recognizing that there's a flurry of development going on and we want to make sure we're being really aggressive with tree protection and growing our tree towns in cities. Thanks again to Commissioner Douglas for raising this and making sure that we're on top of it as we move forward. All those options we intended are there for for folks to be replenishing our tree.
Commissioner Macy?
It's a good question. Does this allow? Does this allow half and half? Like they plant some trees, pay some money? Like, as you say, they can't plant 70 trees all the time, but maybe they could plant 10 and then pay for 60.
Right. I believe basically the planning commission under the ordinance has the discretion as part of a special land use to do either or, indicate that the petitioner needs to plant a minimum of X number of trees that you can put on your property and that any others then should fall under this other provision.
Any other questions? All right. Well, we have a motion on the table. I'm going to call for the vote. Start with Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Commissioner Asser?
Yes.
Commissioner Bruce?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbs?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. All right, Mr. Twing. We look forward to seeing what you guys come up with. And, you know, I mean, the good news here is, is we had a lot of projects that have been, you know, just naturally complying with our intentions. So that's a positive. One that popped up and, you know, just like everything, it's a journey and an adjustment. We're going to make that adjustment to make sure we're doing better. So, good. All right. This now brings us to items 13 and 14 on tonight's agenda. We've had some lengthy discussion about what we're going to do. So I think at this point, does anyone have any motions on this? Or shall we at least begin the public comment and get through as much as we can get through tonight? I see Commissioner Perush with her hand up. Commissioner Perush?
I will make a motion that we postpone, listening to the public comment that is remaining, as well as consideration of the remaining items on the agenda, to a special meeting to be held next Monday, July 20th, at 7 o'clock in the evening.
Mr. Gillum, real quick before we second him.
My understanding, I got a message from Mitch Schwanger. And I checked and it looks like there may be an issue next week. And looking at the city calendar, I think the Environmental Advisory Board scheduled a special meeting for next Monday night. And I guess it's a question of our ability to be able to broadcast and stream two different meetings at the same time. Carol, can you back me up on this one?
Yeah, we have Thursday, July 17th open and Tuesday, July 21st, open on the schedule right now. The Environmental Advisory Board has not met since the pandemic began. And at this time, and if Aaron's still available, he can also support this. They have a resolution that they need to vote on to bring forward to the city commission. So they had a need to be. The meeting has not been noticed. So I don't know if they would be amenable to moving their meeting to Tuesday evening if the city commission chooses Monday for their meeting. But again, Thursday is available and Tuesday is definitely open as well.
Commissioner Dubac? Wait, we have a motion on the table though by Commissioner Perush. Before we second it, I think Commissioner Perush could withdraw the motion to have further discussion based on any new information.
Therefore, we will withdraw the motion at this point and perhaps we'll just have a discussion about the date and then I can make a different motion.
Commissioner Dubac and then Commissioner Macy.
So that was Thursday, the 16th, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. And that would work for me, I think, given, you know, the public that has gone to the trouble of laying in on this, you know, we should try and get this to this comment sooner than later. And Mr. Gillum, I know we talked this through, just want to make sure I'm clear. Postponement to a special meeting, then that's a new meeting, correct? So we would carry over this public comment on this issue because we're taking that issue there. But it would also open up to new public comments, correct?
Absolutely correct. Yes.
So we'd want to start that meeting at 5:30, whenever we did. As soon as possible.
Commissioner Macy?
That's one of the things that Commissioner Perush had said earlier was about taking time to consider the public comment that we're hearing tonight. So I'm just wondering, I mean, it's only 9:30 now. It seems like we could listen to an hour or two of public comment tonight, have less public comment maybe to listen to at the next meeting and have time to consider what we, what we hear tonight.
Yeah, I kind of like the idea of at least anywhere to be right now. So, you know, I plan on these meetings going to, you know, at least 11 o'clock. So if we could get through the public comment as far as possible tonight and then pick it up where we left off at a special meeting, then we will have, I mean, if we have another meeting, we're going to have more public comment. But instead of adding 10 hours of public comment, you know, we might still just have five, you know, or three. Any thoughts, motions? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we postpone this meeting until, that we conduct this meeting until 11:00 PM, hearing as much public comment as we can. Postpone the balance of the public comment and our discussion to a meeting on Thursday, July 16th at seven? Seven. I'll try that.
Maybe, okay. Motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? You might get a second, Commissioner Douglas, if you run the same line and just maybe say like six?
Okay, six?
Same, okay, we got a second by Commissioner Dubac.
Hey, come on, I gave you, I gave people an opening there. I said seven and nobody said anything.
Seven Eastern Standard Time. Okay. Discussion. Commissioner Gibbs?
I will be working until after 6:00 PM on Thursday. So I'll have to not be on the screen. You know what I mean? I'll have to do it by phone. Is that a problem with anyone?
I think you can, you can show up tardy if you need to. Just, you know, let us know, let the city, write the city manager, myself, your schedule, when you expect to be there. That way we get it on the record that you weren't just, that you were, you know, you had a conflict and you'll be joining at this time. I think that's perfectly fine, Commissioner Gibbs. Commissioner Levasseur?
With that in mind, for the agenda that's posted and the notice that's posted for continuation on Thursday, could we attach links to the, to the public comment, much as was done recently with the planning commission? To make that available for the public and for, make that available for the public as well as Commissioner Gibbs, if she's getting here a little bit late?
I think we're going to be listening to the public comment just like we normally would. You know, I think with the planning commission, we did it on a, because we had technical issues. I don't know that we're going to have any technical issues. Any thoughts, Commissioner Dubac?
Tonight's public comment will be part of the live stream of this meeting. And what we listen to on Thursday will be part of the live stream. That'll be viewable, viewable as part of that meeting. So, I mean, I guess the answer is, we do that already.
If I may, if WROK is able to get the link built, we could put the link to, just to this meeting's video on the agenda. I don't know that we're going to have time to build any other ancillary links and get the notice prepared on time, given that we also have a planning commission meeting to run tomorrow evening.
I think they're all public, you know, they're all memorialized, both in video and everything. I don't know, we want to put staff through the extra burden. I hear where Commissioner Levasseur's coming from, but I don't know if it brings that much more value, considering all the staff time that would have to go to Vanessa with everything going on this week. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. I'm going to call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Gibbs.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush? Commissioner Levasseur?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I vote yes. Okay. The motion passes, so we'll proceed with the public comment through, till, was it 11:30? Commissioner Douglas or 11? Sorry.
11.
Okay. Mitch Schwanger?
Hi, my name is Michael Meyer. I live on Seminole in Rockland for 34 years. I'm just three blocks off Woodward and a neighborhood that I love and am proud to be a part of. I have never been more disappointed in the city council and the mayor that I voted for in every election, hoping that they are acting to make us safe and protect our property value. Obviously, this is not the case. What makes this obvious? When you have a meeting that is not open to the public, then it has to be done in a remote location, it's obvious that you don't want to have to listen to or answer to the public. So you have stolen our voice. What are you hiding? If it has to be done in this manner, you know it's wrong. Redwood can possibly come from marijuana stores on Woodward Avenue in our neighborhood. This is, there is no upside, period. The reasons against the zoning proposal are so numerous that this firm doesn't allow the time to cover them. So I can only assume that this is the reason for doing it this way. Thank you. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Rich Kretsch, I have nothing but bad thoughts about people who want to put marijuana stores on Woodward Avenue. There are enough light industrial places in the city where they could be located and spoil the image of oil any more than it already has. The council and the people that are pushing it through are doing it kind of backhanded. And I bet every penny I got that not one of them lives. and I bet every penny I got that not one of them lives close to Woodward Avenue. I think it's underhanded and sneaky to do this while you're, you're not having open sessions. My discontent is my problem. Your conscience may be your problem.
This is Melissa Herman, I live in Royal Oak and I'm calling to voice my opposition to having recreational marijuana shops on Woodward. Please put them in a non-commercial, you know, put them on Woodward, put them in a more industrial area, we don't want these in our neighborhood. Thank you, bye.
Hello, my name is Anne Maglin, I live at 4200 Seminole Drive in Royal Oak. I am calling to voice my strong objection to the development of marijuana retail businesses on Woodward Avenue. I believe that is way too close to our neighborhood. I feel like citizens deserve time to give their input about this, which is why I'm calling, but I think there needs to be further discussion among the commission members and the public about what is being developed along Woodward, the nature of such businesses, and whether Woodward Avenue is the best location for such businesses. As somebody who has lived in Royal Oak her entire life, I am a schoolteacher in Royal Oak, I really feel strongly about having more public discussion about this issue and I would like the commission to start over and include neighborhood input before drafting an ordinance. Our neighborhood input should be reflected in the new ordinances. So that is my comment. Thank you.
My name is Kristin, this is a reference to the City Commission vote on the marijuana zoning July 13th. Now, when I think about this, you know, each and every one of you should be really ashamed of yourselves how this process has been handled. I know it's very difficult to do your job, but this has been morally reprehensible the way that you've conducted yourself. Not one of you has opened up your end of the deal, mayor especially. I wonder how much money has been put in your election coffers, because I do know the number. You have lost your way, sir. I bet you can't even remember why you got into public life. It involves abandoning what politicians were supposed to do. Supposed to fight for the people elected you, not for those who put money in your pocket. Although many people voted in Royal Oak, as you guys, as you guys have said, to decriminalize marijuana, but it was not so that you could gain favor in political contributions. It's just scratching the surface as well. I wonder what people would say in the AUSA office downtown, and they find out there's an 18 no-bid contract they've given out over the last several years. Luckily, each and every one of them and their business partners have given political contributions to many of you. There is no need to place marijuana businesses on Woodward. Marijuana businesses were restricted to areas zoned for light industrial. Up to 166 properties would qualify as locations for retail marijuana sales, and that is from a staff memo on the Planning Commission dated 8/2019. The zoning changes. It's not for the betterment of the citizens of Royal Oak, but you wouldn't know that because you haven't asked. Change to the adult business ordinance on Woodward is morally bankrupt and done without meaningful input from the citizens are going to be affected the most. None of you sitting up there live anywhere near or close to Woodward, and that is the biggest scandal you will have to live with the rest of your lives. Why don't we just pause, have some open discussion, have a couple of town hall meetings? A large place of social distancing can happen. And adhere to the number one goal of the master plan that we both, that you guys put into place, which is to protect the neighborhoods. What this city should do is opt out of approving marijuana businesses, so neighbors can be preserved and protected. So during approval of this marijuana ordinance, in-person meetings can be allowed. Next, schedule two town hall meetings in large venue. Mail meaningful, informative notices to everyone within 100, or within 1,000 feet of the Woodward corridor. Eliminate Woodward as a planned corridor for marijuana businesses. And again, protect our neighborhoods as the number one goal that you should be thinking about right now. You've already done away with many of these.
The two marijuana ordinances on your agenda are going to create the most significant and profound change of any zoning ordinance amendment in the whole history of Royal Oak. This involves the entire Woodward corridor. Within that corridor, there are approximately 5,000 homes containing people and families that will be affected by this new ordinance. The problem we have is that most of the people who live close to Woodward don't even know you're going to vote on this tonight. But a few people know about it because of what happened with the pawn shop last month and know that you're planning on pawn shops to be located next to marijuana stores. A public hearing is insufficient unless people know about it. We know your meeting doesn't attract enough people because the notice is insufficient. There's never been one mailed notice to anyone in the Woodward corridor. I know you're going to say you had a survey. The survey did not address people's opinions about the ordinance you're going to vote on tonight. It was a general survey taken about a year and a half ago. We know you're going to say that you had workshops and you discussed this in a public meeting. Well, that's true, but the workshop, one of them attracted one public comment. Another one was in a very tiny room, room 309, with a handful of people from the neighborhood and mostly people from the marijuana industry. The Planning Commission held a public hearing in November of 19. Only seven people showed up to comment, all from the marijuana industry. You can engage the public when you want to. You had town hall style meetings when you started out the Northern Oaks Project. There were rooms full of people, information was presented, questions were asked, there was trading off back and forth. You did the same thing with the City Center Project. A huge meeting occurred at the Churchill High School. People asked questions, there were presentations, answers to questions were given. But with the most significant change in the history of Royal Oak, you've avoided all those public interactions that can educate people about your ordinance. It seems like there may be a reason that you're doing it that way. And you're doing it during the middle of a coronavirus epidemic, when you can't even have a live commission meeting, it's on Zoom. People have to call in, there's a chilling effect on their public comment when that happens. You need to adjourn this whole thing, there's no marijuana emergency. If you do it and hold a public hearings, you'll build a lot of confidence in the public. If you have confidence in your law and your ordinance, that it actually helps people, that you should not have any problem putting this over and presenting it in a way where people can understand it. If you don't adjourn this and you move forward, you're going to be playing the dirtiest trick ever on 5,000 residents of Royal Oak, which has ever been played by a city commission.
The names remain the same, but the bad ideas continue to change. The master plan was established with the input of the community and leadership of Royal Oak. The number one goal was to protect our neighborhood. Now, with the wisdom of this council, you believe that you have a better outlook than the effort that was put forth by the originators of the master plan. I have to wonder if you move forward trying to amend the zoning ordinance, if any of your homes and neighborhoods would be affected. It only makes common sense to opt out of approving the marijuana businesses from the ordinance, adjourning approval of marijuana ordinances until neighborhood meetings can be held. The evidence should have a say with what affects their neighborhood and not rely on selfish interests of other parties. You should notify those that live within 1,000 feet of Woodward, the corridor you're looking to create with properly informative and timely information. I continue to be amazed at the arrogance of which you treat the residents of Royal Oak. It won't go unnoticed in November. Thank you very much.
My name is Sally Gorgosian. I have been a resident of the city of Royal Oak for over 80 years. I'm calling to object to the rental of store space on Woodward Avenue for a marijuana store and a, I attend the Emmanuel Bethel Church and as I say, I have lived in Royal Oak for many years and I really love the city and I would not like to see those two businesses located on Woodward Avenue. Thank you, goodbye.
My name is Claudia Crosby, I live in the northwest section of Royal Oak, three houses from Woodward Avenue. And I am very concerned about the zoning consideration of allowing marijuana stores and pawn shops and that type of thing to be opened on Woodward Avenue. Woodward Avenue in this has always been a beautiful place in this part of town, prides itself in our neighborhoods and in the urban Woodward Avenue strip. We've always tried to support the businesses along Woodward Avenue. Such businesses, I'm very concerned, will threaten some of the security of our neighborhood and I'm also concerned about the property value, because a lot of people will not buy their houses if they know what kind of stores are nearby. Please, please consider not allowing these types of stores to come onto Woodward Avenue or anywhere in Royal Oak. Thank you very much.
My name is Amy, that's the name you did, T Y P H, I'm calling about the Golden Basket and the pot shop that is going to be decided on going into that location. I am strongly and vehemently opposed to that for several reasons. We do have Upton Elementary School in that neighborhood, there are a lot of young children that live in the neighborhood. We just simply can't have pot shops around schools whatsoever. Also, with this being on Woodward, I'm sure there's a lot of drug trafficking to begin with between Detroit and Pontiac. I don't know that for sure, but this has elements of people that maybe we don't want in our neighborhood, especially since it's attached to a neighborhood with an elementary school in there. Secondly, all the pot shops should be somewhat centralized around City Hall, the courthouse, and the police station. That way, those places can be monitored. Woodward is not a good spot for any of this. It's just going to drive behavior that I don't think we want in the city of Royal Oak. Thank you.
This is Ute Van Pelt, I live on Cooper 4310 Cooper Avenue, right behind the Golden Basket and the former Berry Draxel Zedman. And I oppose to the marijuana shop. It's not good for this neighborhood, it's not safe. Ute Van Pelt, 248-549-2858, and I do oppose.
This is Mick McGuire, 4456 Arlington Street. I recently had a conversation with the agent that deals with a Mr. Wayne, Department of Enforcement, and he says, yes, they still are, marijuana is still an illegal drug and I was against selling marijuana. I don't understand why the city would want to be involved with anything that is illegally federally. That's a question I have for you. And also, you are now embarking on something that will change the face of the city of Royal Oak. And I'm curious to whether or not you'll be able to tell your children, your grandchildren that on your watch, the laws are changing now, they're selling marijuana in the city of Royal Oak. That's one of the comments I would say, just want to remind you again, you are embarking on something that's breaking the federal law and I say this could come down hard on the city. Thank you.
My name is Mary Dart and I live on Arlington Drive in Royal Oak. I am vehemently opposed to having a recreational marijuana shop in the neighborhood. I don't think it'll be, you know, something that's going to bring a nice element to the area, it's going to make the city look cheap. And also, I don't even think, I think it's too close to the church, which is another factor. And, you know, I think this should be rezoned as an adult business, because you have to be 18 or older. So I hope you consider my comment at the city council meeting and vote this proposal down. I'm really glad that the pawn shop got voted down, but now this one does too. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kristin, this is a concern of the City Commission meeting and subsequent vote July 13th on the issue of marijuana zoning licensing laws within Royal Oak, while a large number of residents voted to decriminalize marijuana possession and criminal prosecution for smaller amounts of the drugs. They did not vote to turn our family city into a high-volume regional distribution center for cannabis and oral-related activities. However, the ordinance under consideration would allow up to 19, certain restrictions could allow many more. The proposed zoning charges, changes would make Woodward the primary location for new marijuana shops. However, this is the wrong location due to the lack of parking, close proximity to neighborhoods, schools, churches, and parks. This vote would not only be changing an ordinance, it would change the definition of adult businesses, but would also allow for many others like massage parlors, tattoo parlor, and pawn shops, like the pawn shop being proposed for the old Army Store across the street from the Arab Band Store and in violation of the setback requirement. That same group who brought the Golden Basket is the group who tried recently to open the pawn shop. Thankfully, they were turned down by the zoning board a couple weeks ago. And here they are again, trying to bring another business element, which was debated many years ago. As soon as this ordinance is changed, it opens the door for the pawn shop to reapply in a couple of months. This group has done this before and will continue to do it again. It's not about our communities, it's about their money. They don't live here and don't care. There is no need to place marijuana business on Woodward, they could very easily be restricted to light industrial area. There are 166 properties that were qualified, based off of the city staff memo dated 8/2019. The commission should take a pause and start over, have a transparent discussion by giving neighborhood input. While I agree you have had some meetings around the subject, none have been focused on neighborhood preservation. Our neighborhoods should be reflected in the new ordinance. The city council wants to do the right thing. Most of the people that found out about this vote did it through their own way, not because the city may have been aware of it. It looks like to many you are trying to ram this through without public comment or meeting. There is no reason you can't wait until there is an in-person town hall. The city should, one, opt out of approving marijuana businesses until neighborhoods can be preserved and protected. Two, have in-person meetings. Three, schedule two town halls in large venues to adhere to social distancing. Three, mail meaningful, informative notices to everyone within 1,000 feet of the Woodward corridor. Five, obtain input from those who live or own property near Woodward. Six, eliminate Woodward as a planned corridor for marijuana businesses. And lastly, protect our neighborhoods as the number one goal of the master plan, because this does not. Thank you.
This is Gina McQuire, M C T U I R E. I am a resident on Royal Oak Avenue. I am calling regarding the ordinance change to allow multiple marijuana businesses up and down the Woodward corridor. I am very, very opposed to this. I feel like this is being, trying to be slid in without us knowing. No one has told us about this, we're hearing that you're the next store at. We're hearing that through the next door, not through our um, city council or anybody within the city. We're hearing it, you know, through an app. I am very opposed to this. I do not want to see our um, nice city turn into the Woodward, under the eight mile corridor, um, with smes. You ask for pawn shops, now you're asking for marijuana shops. Are you going to be stripped during smes? Um, very, very hurt. I've lived here for twenty-five years. I love this area. I do not want to see it destroyed. Thank you.
This is Sergio Bestmagen from Metals in Time in downtown Royal Oak. And I'm leaving a comment about today, sorry, tonight, July thirteenth uh, commission meeting. And I think that it's about time the city is, you know, finally getting around to this. And obviously, I know that, you know, we wanted to make sure everything was uh, done properly and with this COVID, everything was delayed. And I, I do think that, you know, this is the future. And if you look at how many people this helps, I mean, we lost our dad to cancer five years ago, and I think that this could have definitely helped him out. And we should have probably looked more at this kind of stuff for medicine. Uh, but the one thing I wanted to basically make my public comment on is as far as the decision on how um, you guys are gonna pick the winners for that, as far as this is just gonna be first come, first served, or if it's gonna be, this is our chance, I think, to make the ci- the city a better place as far as the different properties that you guys are looking at. And, and the only way to do that is really to do like a point system. I know you guys are worried about getting sued and so forth, but then they, anyone, if they want to get, if they want to sue someone, they're gonna sue somebody. You know, you can't control that. But if you make it a point system where easiest way to do it is to see what is the tax basis now and what is the tax basis with this new system? So, that's, that way, you're not um, you know, you're not discriminating against anything because that way, you can make it where obviously, if the new one is gonna have more of a tax basis, it means that the old one was so old that it hadn't been remodeled or reassessed in a long time. But I think that, you know, it's exciting to do that. And one thing that I, I hundred percent think that we should not go away from is the parking requirement. I mean, there's a lot of properties on Woodward, but not a lot of them have a parking requirement, which is a good thing that we, with that and the thousand-foot barrier, you limit how many units are gonna be there, and then you can open them up down the line. So, I hundred percent think that we should look at a point system, and that's something you guys can talk about, but I don't want it to delay it any longer because it's been going on for almost a year and a half now. But uh, and also, of course, the parking requirement that is needed. And I do think that we should look into that. And I'm excited to see what you guys come up with. And I know either way, you guys will make a great decision and looking forward to it. Thank you. Once again, Sergio Bestmagen from Metals in Time. We've been in Royal Oak for twenty-three years. Thank you.
This is Sarah Salter, calling regarding the commission meeting on marijuana location tonight thirteenth. It's time to admit that Woodward is not suitable for many businesses who need more than existing parking, serve more than clients, serve more clients than typical marijuana business hours. Why? Because directly behind and nearby are residents, mostly with families. I think we went through this lately. Yes, when homeowners purchased their homes, they knew there was a commercial goodbye nearby or directly behind or across. What they did not expect was that the city would allow less desirable uses by handing out variances, just as homeowners in other several neighborhoods did not know the city would permit other types of structures and uses that would decrease their values. A couple of weeks ago, most of the planning commission acted on their knowledge and respect for residents and turning down another undesirable use. They knew that was the right thing to do. A resident well aware of recent proposed changes, it's time to respect residents in all neighborhoods. Perhaps if some buildings or offices happen to be vacant in the general downtown area along with parking structure spaces, that may better suit their needs. Thank you.
I'm Joyce Megan, and I do belong to Woodward corridor. I understand that there are some possibilities of that changing with the impact of zoning ordinance. And I'm calling to say that like the master plan, um, with the long-range goal of neighborhood preservation, residential land is to be recognized and preserved, like the um, commission to include public input before drafting any ordinance. And if that needs starting over, then start it over. I also like the community to please consider the idea of allocating marijuana shops as public, I'm sorry, not public, um, adult businesses under that allocation. And for the most part, that um, things would be, there'd be a level of transparency there in Royal Oak, recognizing that there's not really the money boost that the shops would provide. So, again, speaking of the master plan, doing input from the community, especially those that are along the corridor, and not changing the ordinance as a rezoning for that, places in the area that smaller should be exercised upon. Again, thank you for your consideration and hoping that you will continue to serve the people of Royal Oak and that um, those are all of those businesses.
My name is Elizabeth Richardson. I live right near thirteen and a half in Woodward and have lived here for almost fifty years. And I love Royal Oak and it is, is a beautiful town and a beautiful neighborhood. And I would like for it to continue that way. I'm not con- I am concerned about the direction the city is taking, but especially concerned that there might be a marijuana distribution center right across the street from me, almost, and right across the street from beautiful Pioneer Park where all the children play. This is not the place for that kind of business. I did not vote to decriminalize marijuana in the first place, but I'm certainly unhappy to have one in my neighborhood. Thank you. I hope that you will take this into consideration. My name is Elizabeth Richardson and I, the number is two four eight five four nine six four.
Daniel, M S D A N I D L, four six two three, Downwood Avenue. I will object to the city government passing ordinances and/or zoning changes to allow marijuana businesses along Woodward. While the city commission and planning commission may have held work sessions over the past eighteen months, the claim that they were to obtain public input is specious as best. During that time, I've seen no communication from city government regarding this issue. In fact, I was not even aware of this issue until seeing it on social media and as a result, attending the citizens' meeting on July ninth at Emmanuel Bethel Church. In response to this meeting, the city cited a purported quantitative objective survey, which supposedly demonstrated that a majority of Royal Oak citizens favor marijuana businesses in our community. I was neither asked to participate in or even made aware of this survey, despite the fact that I live twelve hundred feet east of Woodward. I do not believe that the city has made the effort necessary to ensure that the citizens of Royal Oak are aware of these plans to allow marijuana businesses on Woodward. More heavily, it's a responsibility to obtain meaningful input from the citizens, especially those in neighborhoods adjoining the Woodward corridor. I urge the commission in the strongest possible terms to divine any decisions on this issue until open and meaningful dialogue can take place between the citizens and the government to obtain input from the public. Thank you.
This is Jackie Redeka. I live at Woodward, Woodward in McCullough. And I am calling regarding the issue of marijuana zoning. And I am curious that you think building a two-story building with Golden Basket Restaurant is, is something that is going to enhance our neighborhood? There is just an alley between Golden Basket and residential home. You seem to be shutting this through without notice to the residents that are being affected. Seems really downright sneaky. The only way everybody in our neighborhood knows about this is word of mouth, and we who live here are very upset. You are right in walking distance from a church and an elementary school. And what you really are asking for is in four-mile radius that you can put at least eight pot shops. It's not just the one, you just want to take up Woodward Avenue. You're shutting this through. This has been sneaky from day one. You are local government gone amok. If it's good enough for Woodward Avenue, why not put it downtown Royal Oak? We live really a lot more traffic and business going on. It is shameful that you think this is something that is going to enhance a neighborhood filled with children. I am to- totally opposed to this, as my neighbors are. Please take consideration of what this neighborhood looks like and what it can be turned into. Most pot shops can fail in twenty-four hour之内. Really sounds like something we want in our backyard. And I hate that about it.
My name is Carol Hotch and I've lived in Royal Oak for fifty-three years. I live at um, on Arlington Drive since nineteen eighty-six. It's a great neighborhood. It's hard to believe that city officials who I vote for would even consider turning Woodward Avenue into a drug thoroughfare. Eleven to nineteen or more marijuana stores from eleven mile to fourteen mile, ridiculous. Why would you want to do this to our beautiful city? Money, big taxes versus consideration for the residents. That is what it looks like. I'm very upset that Woodward would be known as the road where one can get your Rita in Woodward, respectable stores, try another city. Taxpayer was very, taxpayer notification was very poor. This is an important issue. How transparent are you? This issue cries for residents to taxpayers' input. The location, uh, the former Golden Basket and Army Navy store for mega marijuana store is ridiculous. Way too close to our neighborhood, two neighborhoods, a church and a playground. Put it in a light industrial area. Royal Oak has several. Please do not put a mega marijuana store in our neighborhood. Please do not turn Woodward into the weed road of Michigan. I want to continue to be proud of my city. I want to be proud of my city officials. Uh, thank you very much.
My name is Marilyn Lane. We are totally opposed to the proposed zoning change that would allow a high-volume two-story mega marijuana store where the Golden Basket Restaurant site is. There is no place on Woodward in this predominantly residential area for this type of adult business. We own two properties within Royal Oak and the home we live in is near the Golden Basket. We chose this quiet residential area of Royal Oak to retire and live in because of a quaint, well-kept neighborhood. This type of business will flood the area with outsiders, invite loitering, as well as change the fabric of this neighborhood, and will negatively impact property values as well as deteriorate security in this neighborhood. I strongly encourage you to reconsider zoning this type of business here, where there is limited parking, as well as being a family-oriented residential neighborhood. I suggest that if there must be this type of adult business in Royal Oak, you look for a light industrial site where the residential neighborhoods will not be as negatively impacted. A mega pot store has no place in this neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, my name is Dr. Tom Kopsch, three two two six eight Woodward, Royal Oak. Um, I hope everybody is staying safe and healthy. We all get through this safe and sound and life gets back to so much of a normal city. So, getting back to the issue, um, I was under the impression the Joe's Army Navy and uh, the cannabis store were one and the same and it got voted down. I was very pleased and happy about that, but now I'm realizing it's two separate issues. So, here I am, just gonna voice my opinion. Like I said, my business is just south of uh, Golden Basket, which would be the cannabis. Um, I just think it would be terrible for my business. I think it would be terrible for Royal Oak, the parking, and let alone just the nature of the business. So, I'm hoping that it gets voted down, just like the Joe's Army Navy. Um, I just don't think it's a good idea. Um, first of all, I don't think it should be on the forefront and because it shouldn't even be on the agenda because it, it exceeds all the setbacks or it's not in line with them. So, I don't even know why we're even talking about it. But I'm sure I could get deeper into that with people getting paid off and, you know, some wrongdoing going on and then let alone, you know, the business people that are coming into this neighborhood with their past. So, I don't want to get nasty and mean, just want to say I'm against it and hopefully it gets voted down again, just like uh, Joe's Army Navy. Take care and hopefully you think it through and what's best for the city and or the neighborhood. Thanks. Take care. Bye.
This is Gail McGuire at four four five six Arlington Drive. And it seems like if you are planning on turning Royal Oak into southeastern Michigan's Mecca for the marijuana industry, the citizens should be, be notified within a thousand feet of Woodward, letting them know exactly what you have planned. They should be able to voice their opinions at public meetings on what they will be forced to live with. No one that I have talked to ever received that survey you said was mailed out, and they weren't aware of all the storage you plan on allowing on Woodward. If this is okayed, we will be living with your decisions as long as we live in this city. We should have a voice in this. The planning commission meeting, which changed the zoning for marijuana, was never publicized. No one ever knew about it. That is why no one showed up. We do care about our city and our neighborhoods, and we do care what kind of businesses are allowed in it. Thank you very much.
I'm Larry Stafford. I live on Robert Wood in Royal Oak, and I'm calling about the marijuana zoning that you're gonna do in the city of Royal Oak. I live three blocks off of Woodward, and I'm very disappointed in hearing that you want to put stores along Woodward Avenue. My first opinion is, put them down, downtown Royal Oak. You have more business, more people there, plus you have the big park structures that you built down there. Put them downtown. Do not put them into the residential area. I would like to see this put off for six months to one year, so that we can come to you and talk face-to-face instead of doing this on the phone and doing this over Zoom or watching you on YouTube. This is not the way to change all the city ordinances without having public comments. If you want, do it outside of one of our big parks. Star Park has a lot of gazeboles. Put it there. Also, do me one favor. I live in the Cooper, Dakota area. Go talk to the people that have been approached by a lawyer and real estate agent out of Bloomfield Hills. It's not Dennis Collins. They may be doing this behind Dennis's back, not sure, but they have received packages. You people go out and walk the campaign, go out and walk and talk to the people in the neighborhood, so that we can get this ordinance if you want it. I'm not against marijuana, I just don't want the store in my neighborhood. So, go talk to those people on Dakota and Cooper and ask and talk to them about how they've been approached to sell their properties, plus the doctor, the contractor that's right next to the Golden Basket. They have approached him to sell in his building to put a big parking lot there. This is not right. Strong arming does not go. Please put this off for six months to a year. We do not want this a residential area. You're too close to elementary school, church, and parks. You try this with your pawn shop, do not do this with your marijuana shops. Bellamy is a perfect place to put one on. Nice big shops there that are open or downtown Royal Oak. Thank you. Have a good day.
Hello, my name is Georgiana Craywick. I'm a concerned citizen with a teenage daughter living in close proximity to a, one of your, one of the weed facilities that they want to put up. I'm opposed to this. I feel it's too close. There's an elementary school down the street. There's a church across. I think the zoning's off. I feel that uh, Royal Oak does not need weed shops all along Woodward. This is an upper-middle-class to middle-class community, and I feel there's a neighborhood right behind one of the facilities, and I'm sure more facilities. I don't feel it belongs on Woodward Avenue. I feel there's other industrial streets that would be more suitable for this kind of business. Please consider not approving eleven weed shops in three miles. It's just not for our city. Once again, my name is Georgiana Craywick. I have a teenage high school student that is also opposed to this and would be expressed being sad when she heard that this may happen to our community. Once again, please do not take our city down a notch. Keep it. Keep it upper-middle-class, the way it should be. Thank you and goodbye.
My name is Irene Gallagher and I oppose the idea of a Woodward corridor being a place for marijuana businesses. I think we should protect our neighborhoods and put a number one of the master plan. We should be keeping them, not changing any ordinances at all. We should be opting out of approving marijuana businesses until neighborhoods can be preserved and protected. Ensure approval of marijuana ordinances until in-person meetings are allowed. It's a two-town meetings at large venues. Be meaningful, informative, notice everyone within 100,000 feet of Woodward corridor. Okay, input from those who live or own property near Woodward. And eliminate Woodward as a planned corridor for marijuana businesses. Thank you.
My name is Laura Understaffian. I live at 3867 Yorba Linda Boulevard and I am disappointed to hear that marijuana dispensaries will be opening in my neighborhood close across from me and that there is a number of marijuana dispensaries that will be opening in a three-mile range. I think that this is disastrous for the city and for the residents in the area and quite frankly enough reason for me to want to move out of the city if this actually does occur. Thank you.
This is Ellen Nappo. I live at 1526 West Webster. I'm calling about the marijuana issue on the agenda. Royal Oak residents voted overwhelmingly in support of retail marijuana establishments. That is legal in Michigan, period. In terms of where those establishments are located, I can't think of a better place than along the Woodward corridor. Woodward is perfect. I don't understand these folks crying, yes, it's legal and everything, but not in my backyard. Community concerns have been taken into account. Putting up a fight and dragging one's feet are just distraction at this point.
My name is Georgiana Craywick, K-R-A-L-I-K. I live on Arlington Place in Royal Oak, across the street from where the proposed marijuana store is supposed to go in with Golden Basket laws. And I'm totally opposed to it. I mean, this is a family neighborhood. The last thing we need is mega marijuana stores and turning people from all over the place on Woodward to Woodward. So yes, I am against, especially what is the idea of 11 stores with the option of more? That's unbelievable. I understand we need more businesses in town, but let's be real about what we're encouraging and what we think are serious about. And I think that, you know, my message is definitely opposed to the marijuana store going in at the Golden, old Golden Basket site on Woodward. Thank you very much. My number if you need to reach me.
East Saunders, 2130 LaRome Avenue in Royal Oak. I'm very concerned about the continuation of, you know, pursuing the marijuana establishments in the city of Royal Oak. One just needs to travel down eight miles to realize how many facilities readily available and in having spoken with some of people that I know that live in that vicinity, that it's not had a positive impact on their neighborhoods. I'm very concerned that we are, that we may be opening something that we may not be able to work our way back out. When I look at the fact that the general purpose and intent of the city is to maintain the integrity of neighborhoods and to retain the character and the property values and the aesthetic qualities of the community at large, I'm not thinking that this is something that we want to have on Woodward. I'm very concerned about the number. I heard one, 1.8 facilities. So that would mean between 10 mile and Maple. I'm just not sure that, that this is the kind of businesses that we want to become known for. And if, if it is approved, that there will be some sort of marijuana establishment, be it a grow facility or for, you know, the use of, or I would prefer that it not be on Woodward where we have a great deal of other, other people traveling from other areas. I would also prefer that it not be so close to church, school, park. Again, I really hope that you go back and remember that it's your job to ensure that we maintain the integrity of our neighborhoods, retain the character, property values and aesthetic quality of our community. Thank you.
I am a Royal Oak homeowner. We've been told that the survey conducted by Cobalt Community Research Group in April 2019, with responses from random 1,150 residents, is a major input to the commission's decision on marijuana establishments. Some quick questions about the survey. While the age breakdown is noted, how many people live from each category? And where do these people live? Were they residents that live near the Woodward corridor? Did they live in apartment buildings or were they homeowners? And how are they chosen? The people responding to the survey have no idea of the potential high quantity of dispensaries and grow houses the commission is considering because one hadn't even been determined by the time of the survey and certainly could have included their answers. By the way, commission, what's the exact algorithm that came up with the potential quantities of dispensaries on Woodward? Survey responders also weren't asked to consider varying proximity to residents and churches and schools. To interpret the results of the survey properly, it's key to note that Royal Oak Woodward corridor is unique in the sense that although it is a major commercial corridor, the vast majority of it breaks up within 100 feet or less to residential areas. Two key pages of the survey are pages nine and 10. On page nine, surveys the preferred location of the marijuana retailers. Residents were asked if they supported locating such businesses in commercial, industrial or downtown areas. And they showed support of locations in all because any consideration about residential was not included. They were reminded that the majority of the potential Woodward commercial area of us is residential neighborhoods. Page nine includes a comment that there is much more division about allowing these businesses downtown. Or would it be assumed that people don't want to walk by dispensaries on their way out to an evening out? What is the simple reason marijuana retail establishments aren't slated for downtown? Do you feel it's too unsavory? Potentially similar reasons why you wouldn't want these businesses in your own neighborhood. Very important on page 10, which details preferred locations for marijuana micro businesses, the additional option of residential areas is included and as such, there is a redounding 67% no for residential with a 65% suggestion instead for an industrial location. So it's clear that when given an educated choice, people will go for marijuana businesses to be outside of a residential area. City commission, what's your recommendation of a residential area that's not within 100 feet of the Woodward corridor? The survey results show that although people may accept what marijuana retailers in their community, they make a distinction between the community in general and are destined when it comes to the residential areas. This isn't about some pure tactical argument abuse marijuana. It's about trusting our language to follow the Royal Oak master plan, not their enlightened, repetitive version that seems to be constantly changing as they seem thick. Thank you.
My name is Patricia Smith. I live on Seminole in Royal Oak and I am very against this change in an ordinance. I want to stop this recreational marijuana stores among Woodward Avenue. We've had enough of this in this Royal Oak to deal with during dream cruises and some other businesses. There's not enough adequate parking for this and 11 is an exceptional amount of time. I don't think as a citizen and in a residential area that I really want to have to deal with this sort of business at this percentage and there's no way to hold it back. And the other adult things that would be allowed in there? We've had trouble with the sized parks before in the past in Royal Oak. We already have two, had two parks around Woodward Avenue on the corner and there is no parking. And this is so close to all our residential areas. You need to put this where they have adequate parking, which would be downtown near the structures if we're going to have it. But I am so against this sort of ordinance and a change of zoning area. We've already rezoned and we lost our school in this quarter mile. Parker School was gone. We've had nothing in there but empty fields. We're not developing things that are appropriate. I know it's the money maker for the city, but to, to put our taxes at better use, maybe you would be better off giving the voters and the residents of this city what we are interested in rather than the pocketbook of the Royal Oak city. Thank you very much.
Long-term residents on Arlington Drive in Royal Oak. My wife and I are totally opposed to any store of recreational marijuana being established along Woodward Avenue. Thank you very much.
Eric Sykes, I would like to comment on agenda item number 13. I read the proposal for where marijuana establishments are recommended to be placed along the Woodward corridor and I'm not satisfied that enough has been done to allow you to make an educated decision that is in the best interest of Royal Oakers. The proposal seems to rely heavily on a majority vote to decriminalize recreational marijuana in a survey of 2% of the population. Given that this proposal is putting these establishments along the Woodward corridor, I feel like independent expert studies should have been utilized. You know, onsite parking is a commodity along the Woodward corridor. Where are the parking studies? Where are the traffic studies? Lastly, where are the studies that show the impact on the neighborhoods that this proposal is approved as is? Will this lower or raise my property value? Will I see more or less crime in my neighborhood? Will police presence need to increase, decrease or stay the same in these areas? Or in other parts of the city? Just because the majority of us voted to decriminalize pot doesn't necessarily equate to us wanting these facilities to be operating in or near our homes and children. And in order for me to feel better about supporting this proposal and understanding what it is, what is an acceptable number of licenses, I would like to see some independent studies that show the impact of setting up these kinds of establishments in Royal Oak. There's so much more that should be considered than just the small percentage of tax revenue that we stand to gain. I find it alarming that when I utilize the city website to help answer my questions and concerns, the site seems to be extremely biased. The talking point seemed to come straight from recreational marijuana proponents. For example, one question or under the FAQ says, "Many of the 30% that voted against recreational marijuana will voice their opposition loudly. How do we ensure that the 70% who voted for it are heard?" How can a resident like myself, who is simply concerned about marijuana facilities near my neighborhood, near my home, near my children? How can I feel like my concern is going to be heard when I see stuff like that on the website? It seems like you already have your mind made up. Please keep in mind that tonight you're here to vote how your constituents want you to vote, not how you want to vote. Ask yourself if you have enough information to make a decision. Have you thought out opposing opinions other than your own? Do you have enough information to make an informed decision? Where are these independent, you know, educated studies? Most importantly, have you thought out those who live along the Woodward corridor? Understand how they feel about this proposal. I think it's easy to believe you're voting for the majority when you surround yourself with those that agree with you and only thought, only thought out opinions that match your own. I just need you to rate thing and postpone this discussion until impact studies are done that can be shared with constituents and then that allows you and the constituents to make a more informed decision. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I'm Edward Smith and I live on the Woodward corridor, close to where this zoning ordinance is being requested. And I want this to be eliminated for planning Woodward corridor for marijuana businesses. It's not the right place for it because I'm a property owner. Very eager to Woodward. We have enough problems at the dream cruise. And also, this ordinance should be reviewed with a person meeting, not by phone messages.
My name is Charles Art and I live in Royal Oak and I'm a little concerned about the medical marijuana issue that's going before the board today. We don't need a bunch of them. One maybe is all right, but we don't need to bring all the other people in here that we don't have capacity to handle. So I would like to not do it. Thank you.
This is 333 North Troy Street. Regarding recreational marijuana in Royal Oak. I want, especially on Woodward Avenue. I want to point out that this area, while it may be demographically isolated from downtown, will create a huge drain on our police. You've spent a long time getting rid of motels that attracted undesirable people and brought down property values. Does anyone here really think that a recreational marijuana store within a thousand feet of your home is going to increase your property value or not decrease it? Be serious. The other thing is that we're living in a time of pandemic and we need lines of people that will not maintain social distancing. Will there be rules in the stores for social distancing? Will there be rules, for instance, allowing only a certain number of people in the store? Will that be left to the store owner? To mitigate all of this, I was suggesting this whole thing about recreational marijuana in Royal Oak. I know you have a lot of people that have contributed to your campaigns, like your commissioners and mayors, and they are looking forward to making a lot of money. You know who, I know exactly who I'm talking about. You, so you. So please, take this into consideration. Take all this into consideration and think of the future. What do you want for your kids and their kids in Royal Oak? Is this what you really, really want? Thank you.
This is Jamie Eccles and I'm calling about the recreational marijuana stores along the Woodward corridor. And I'm calling just to let you know that I am strongly opposed to this. We have a neighborhood, you know, I live at Woodward in the Dakota area, behind Golden Basket and we have a neighborhood full of schools, church across the street, a bunch of young families in the neighborhood and families that have actually stayed in the neighborhood because they enjoy the community, they enjoy being around the Woodward corridor and this would completely destroy that and devalue all of our properties. I think it would prevent families from wanting to live in these neighborhoods behind Woodward if they were behind marijuana shops. So I think it's a very tacky proposal. We don't need this in plain sight. And again, I want to just reiterate that we're strongly opposed, many people in this neighborhood, to these marijuana shops popping up along the Woodward corridor. Thank you.
My name is Linda Lukey, 4015 Auburn. I'm calling in regard to the licensing ordinance and zoning ordinances that are going to be reviewed tonight in relationship to the marijuana businesses that may be coming to Royal Oak. We have a master plan in place and the master plan says that we should only be looking at things that are going to enhance my neighborhood. We're clearly putting a marijuana dispensary and, as we've talked about before, a pawn shop within 750 feet of my park, my playground, my home. And, and the church in our neighborhood is not going to be enhancing our neighborhood. I am very concerned that going to change the setbacks that are required with the zoning ordinance. We already have very, very shallow business frontage all along Woodward and the zoning laws that are currently in place are working just fine. I don't want to see XX parking in the neighborhood. I want to see neighborhoods devalued because of the kinds of businesses that we're allowing. And I certainly want to see a limit in a light industrial section to the number of marijuana dispensary businesses that Royal Oak is willing to have. They do not belong along the Woodward corridor. Thank you.
My name is Mary Ann Tybransky and I'm calling regarding meeting tonight to draft, consider drafting an ordinance. And I'm calling regarding meeting tonight to draft, consider drafting an ordinance in Royal Oak to allow marijuana businesses to set up a shop along Woodward Avenue. I am requesting the commission to delay drafting any ordinance on the cannabis matter until such a time as we, the Royal Oak voters, can attend a public meeting to provide our input. Thank you.
My name is Megan Leahy. I live on Sheridan Drive in Royal Oak, in the Royal Oak Beverly Hills neighborhood. And I am calling to express my opinion on the recreational marijuana stores along Woodward Avenue. I am adamantly opposed to them being allowed. We chose Royal Oak to raise our family because we think this is a great place to raise our family. And these neighborhoods are filled with parks and family atmosphere. And I don't believe that recreational marijuana stores along Woodward Avenue promotes that family values and that ethic that we chose Royal Oak for. If you have any questions, you can contact me. My phone number is 248-761-5485. But again, I am adamantly opposed to recreational marijuana stores being put in along the Woodward Corridor or anywhere in Royal Oak for that matter, but especially along the Woodward Corridor. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Golden, and I am a Royal Oak resident. I'm calling in regards to the marijuana zoning and licensing. And I believe very strongly that this is not the time for such an important decision to be made. My attraction to the Royal Oak neighborhood that I am currently in was the fellow families and character and values reflected in these families. We need to look past the tax revenue and almighty dollar and allow Woodward to develop with more businesses to promote the character of Royal Oak. I urge you to either wait and so you can get more neighborhood input from the citizens of Royal Oak or to vote against these zoning changes.
Hi, my name is Kim Shaffer. I'm a Royal Oak resident, very, very concerned about these plans for all the marijuana places along Woodward. I think it will bring our home values down terribly. Was already concerned about the downtown plan and all the high-rise down there and a plethora of bars versus retail and restaurants. I hope you take all the residents into consideration. I'm unsure of the idea behind this and where our city's going. I'm kind of confused. Thank you. Bye-bye.
My name is James Reed. My address is 4124 Arlington Drive, Royal Oak. The possibility of a plan of having marijuana distribution and a pawn shop roughly Woodward, Normandy, does not fit into this residential area at all. Why? Because of kids, of space, lower property values, and higher traffic rights. And the kids, they don't need to be around people who use pawn shops to finance their lives and get high. People will buy on the outs and light up and walk around the neighborhood. I don't know how many people would want to move into this area. For this neighborhood, it's free. There's just not enough room for the traffic these places will draw. Not being a traffic expert, I knew immediately Starbucks on Woodward could not handle the traffic volume that they have. And hence, a problem that's being ignored. Voting for a pawn shop and marijuana distribution center is not representing the public of rather corporate interests. Thank you.
My name is Carolyn Moore. I live at 4316 Buckingham Road in Royal Oak. And this is my public comment. I believe one marijuana store would be sufficient to supply everyone. I don't believe we need nineteen stores. And nor do we need additional stores approved by having their restrictions waived. The proposed zoning changes to make Woodward a primary location is the wrong location due to the lack of parking and close proximity to my neighborhood. These stores should be restricted to areas zoned for light industrial, and there are hundreds of properties available for them to choose from. I also believe that marijuana, like other adult businesses, should be regulated, requiring minimal setbacks from neighborhoods and places of public assembly. The commission needs to start over, in my opinion, and include the neighborhood input before drafting the ordinance. Our neighborhood input should be reflected in the new ordinance. Thank you for letting me comment. Again, this is Carolyn Moore.
My name is Leanne Conrad. I live on Arlington in Royal Oak. And I just want to comment on all the stores that possibly may show up on Woodward. We are only like two and a half blocks off of Woodward, and I am really worried about this. I don't mind one store, but a whole slew of them on Woodward, plus where the old Golden Basket is, to make that a two-story marijuana store just seems ridiculous to me. I mean, we don't need anything that big. I myself might buy some marijuana, but I do not want more than one in our neighborhood. It's just going to affect traffic. It's going to just, I just don't like it. I feel like that's an unsafe move. And there's no reason for Woodward to be made into this marijuana mecca. And also, I think that we deserve more notice than what you have given us on this. And it's even the two hours given for this commentary, you know, comments from us, it just seems pretty unfair right there. But at any rate, that's my two bits, and I hope you listen to our neighborhood. Thank you. Bye-bye.
This is the comment for tonight's city meeting. This has to do with Agenda Item Number Fourteen about the rezoning and what have you with the marijuana shops on Woodward Avenue. Not in favor of it? My name is Richard Murphy. I am not in favor of it. You know, we do have a master plan in place for a reason. And I don't think we need to make exceptions to it every time something comes up. You know, you guys were voted into office. We expect you to do step on behalf of the citizens. We also expect you to keep the integrity of the neighborhoods and not make foolish decisions that appear to be behind closed doors during the COVID-19 pandemic where people can't come out and have a normal meeting or some kind of town hall to inform the public of the intentions. This all needs to be above board, and right now it does not have the appearance of being that way. And it also has the appearance of not having the citizens of Royal Oak the best interests of them, their families, their children, and future future citizens of the city in mind. So I'm in agreement. I think this thing needs to be opt-out, kind of purgiveness. I think you guys need to really concentrate on preserving and protecting and doing what's best for the citizens. There are various areas around that have light industrial that you could put these in. We don't need eighteen to thirty of them. I don't know whose idea that is, but that is flat out wrong. And it's a waste of time, and it's going to degrade the city beyond belief. And what's going to happen is people will leave the city. Again, I can't voice my opinion enough to cancel the shenanigans. Adjourn until we can have some type of citywide thing. You need to have input from the citizens, not just have the appearance of doing stuff behind closed doors and be upfront. And I also would like to see, like I said, Woodward eliminated from this, the prospect of being the home base for the marijuana houses. Again, there's plenty of other places in the city in the light industrial areas in the north and in the south that could handle this and/or close proximity to the police department. See, they're probably going to be involved with the place a lot. So that is my comment. And again, the master plan should not be tinkered with, should not be messed with. You should adhere to it the way it's written. And I believe it'll be better for the city in the long run instead of getting caught up on this supposed gravy train for the marijuana shop that really, outside of the initial licensing, won't garner any additional money for the city. So I'm not sure where the thought process is on this, but I think it's wrong. And I express, I'm expressing my, I'm expressing my opinion that you, the city council and mayor, take this into consideration and reverse the thought process and get rid of this until we have a valid plan that protects the people.
This is John Whale, Royal Oak. Just got informed about this marijuana licensing for stores. And they're looking at Woodward and they're looking at downtown Royal Oak. We don't need any stores, especially located near neighborhoods. If we have to have stores, which I don't understand why, put them where it's not near neighborhoods. There's lots of them on Campbell. There's lots of room on our eastern border. Let's put them in industrial areas. Thank you.
This is Mary Beth Mandaril. I would like to voice my opposition to allowing new marijuana stores to open along the Woodward Corridor. I lived in Royal Oak Beverly Hills for twenty years and have worked hard to keep our neighborhood and my kids' public school safe and welcoming for our families. And for the past fifteen years, we've been forced to deal with nightly cruise traffic overload of loiterers on Woodward and uncontrolled and excessive noise and exhaust tubes. This non-cruise tradition already draws enough visitors who have negatively changed my neighborhood. And I do not want visitors to come to Royal Oak because it's now going to be known as the new Pot City. I want our city to be known as a city of family-friendly parks, schools, shopping, dining, and safe surroundings. Please vote no on zoning changes that would turn Royal Oak into a regional distribution center for cannabis. I urge you to obtain input from our residents before making any detrimental decisions. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Ferrer, and my address is 4156 Auburn Drive in Royal Oak. I'm contacting you because I understand you'll be discussing licensing for marijuana retailers in Royal Oak and specifically along the Woodward Corridor. Please be aware that I voted for decriminalizing recreational marijuana in Michigan, and I have no problem with marijuana businesses being located in Royal Oak. But we have to be smart about it. The Woodward Corridor is not the optimal location for these businesses. Woodward already has too much traffic and not enough parking, and residential areas are located too close to Woodward. Unlike Big Beaver and other major retail corridors, we do not have large setbacks before residential areas begin. And locating marijuana retailers on Woodward would likely lower housing values in the immediate area, which also lowers the property tax base. Just imagine, too, when Dream Cruise returns and millions tune in on TV to see the cars but also see signs advertising marijuana dispensaries in the background. Is this really the face of Royal Oak if you want to show visitors or others seeking to live or do business here? Fortunately, there's a simple solution. My husband and I were in Colorado recently and wanted to find a recreational marijuana dispensary. We noticed that all of them were located in industrial parks, which naturally kept them away from schools, playgrounds, parks, and residential areas. They were discreet, with no large signs advertising where they were, but they were easily accessible to anyone who wanted to find them. Royal Oak has several industrial parks and areas zoned as light industrial that would be able to accommodate these businesses much better than the Woodward Corridor and without the negative consequences. I question whether it's good public policy to make decisions that could impact so many in the community in the middle of a pandemic when your constituents cannot attend commission meetings in person and make their voices heard. Ideally, there would be some public forums or surveys on this issue before any decisions are made, similar to what was done for Normandy Oak Park and the new downtown park. The forums could be online if necessary. I understand the Sunset Clause on Royal Oak's decision to temporarily opt out of marijuana businesses will also go into effect soon. But this is too important and has too many long-term implications to let some artificial deadline drive the narrative. Whether it's your intent or not, making major decisions at this time without the proper amount of community engagement may give the appearance that you're trying to sneak something through when people aren't looking. Right or wrong, that is probably how it would be publicized after the fact. Just something you might want to think about. Thanks for allowing me to comment on this issue.
This is Robert Judich. I'm calling about the pot plant going in the Golden Basket on Woodward Avenue. I don't think that should be happening. If you're going to put a pot plant up, you're better off moving downtown closer to the police department so they can be monitored closely. Also, one of my issues is Woodward is a drug-run thoroughfare between Pennac and Detroit. We don't need any more of that. We need to try to eliminate these fixtures. We need to avoid because major issues on the Woodward Corridor. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patty Venables-Mon Murphy, and I'm a concerned citizen of the city of Royal Oak. I'm a little, I'm talking about Agenda Item Number Fourteen. I'm really worried about our neighborhood preservation. And that's part of our city master plan. I know there is not enough parking, and I don't believe they should be going on Woodward, especially being that they will be close to an elementary school, which is a big concern for me. I don't want to see our neighborhood degraded by any of this because our little section of Royal Oak was written up as a gem, and I'd like to keep it a gem. Please consider all this and adjourn it until we, the concerned citizens, to vote for people who'll be allowed to be in meetings again because I would like to participate in this, and I feel that we are being ignored. So please consider this when you are talking tonight. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
My name is Suzanne Monica. I live at 4138 Arlington Drive, which is directly behind Art Van and directly across from the Golden Basket Restaurant site. I had lived in this house for over twenty-five years, having moved from Springer, where I lived for thirteen years. I am totally against the idea of changing that site into a marijuana store. The thought of Woodward becoming a main thoroughfare for recreational marijuana in southeast Eastern Michigan sickens me. Please protect our neighborhood and eliminate Woodward as the planned corridor for marijuana businesses. By allowing the Golden Basket site to become a mega marijuana store, how could this be conducive of goal four of the master plan, which is to improve both the function and visual appearance of the major commercial corridors within Royal Oak while protecting and enhancing neighborhood residential areas? Please reconsider and wait until we can have open meetings to include the neighborhood people who live here. Thank you for listening.
Hi, I am calling for myself, Joan Cutler, and my husband Craig Cutler. We live at 208 Mount Vernon Boulevard. We've lived in Royal Oak for seventeen years. We are in the process of raising our three children. And we are very disturbed by the feedback that there is possibly going to be or is being voted on today, I think. A mega pot store, a large pawn shop, although you may be coming around to that again. And we are really concerned about that. The amount of traffic, first of all, from all different areas is not going to be good. Southfield, the feedback on that, I believe it was already, they already had investigations there at that pot shop. And you have all these residents bumping up to Woodward and raising children. This isn't like some inner-city play, so we don't care, we'll just throw up a pot shop. It's not right, it's not fair. You've already got too many liquor licenses down in the main area of Royal Oak, the downtown. And now with this opening, if this does get through, I really think it's going to have a bad effect. We are urging you all to please not vote for this. Thank you so much.
My name is Amy Fosser, and I live on Artin Place, which is directly behind the, which is basically which is directly behind the, which is basically the old Art Van store. So, I am calling, which I know without you've probably guessed, is in reference to um, the recreational marijuana stores that um, are being planned along Woodward Avenue. And primarily, the um, one for, um, that's going to be planned to be in place where the old Golden Basket restaurant is, which is basically across the street from me. Is Art Van Little there? He's staring at that to my back door. Um, I'm very concerned, um, as a parent and as a citizen, to be having a recreational marijuana store, well, quite frankly, anywhere in Michigan. I think they're completely unnecessary and I never would have voted for that law to begin with. But besides the fact that I do have a team and I don't really um, agree in having such access to these things. But the other part of that is, is that quite honestly, I very, very much believe that my home value will drop immediately upon the permission of this site being um, okay to be built. Um, I would very much consider immediately probably trying to sell my house if this goes through. And I'm pretty sure there's other people on my street who feel the same way. I meant that we just knew about the city of Woodward and the city of Royal Oak because, you know, at this point, forget it. If the city is really marketing this to these adult businesses and really going after their opportunity for um, these marijuana businesses to be here, um, I really don't see the point of staying in Royal Oak because you're not really looking out for the citizens of Royal Oak. I understand about needing to put money in the coffers, absolutely. Um, but really, kind of going after these pawn broker and um, adult businesses is not the way to go. And plus, the fact that it's right near a church and right near a park. So, um, and the fact that you don't want to have this in an open discussion forum and holding off, I think um, maybe about the integrity of the board there. Thank you.
Mayor Foyne and members of the city commission, uh, is now eleven oh two by my clock. I started that one at ten fifty-nine. There are forty-five public comments remaining that were recorded today.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Foyner. Um, so based on the motion that um, was voted on and approved, I think we decided that we are going to terminate um, the public calling or adjourn the public calling, public comment for this evening right now and um, listen to the remaining balance at another scheduled meeting uh, and then move forward at that meeting uh, to continue with items thirteen and fourteen. Um, any other thoughts on that? Any changes? Everyone still on board with that decision? Okay. Commissioner Perush?
I'm still on board with the decision. It will give us time also to develop some mechanisms to perhaps get out some correct information. Because clearly, most of these speakers have been fed innocently on their part with a lot of misinformation about this whole thing. The whole Golden Basket thing that is proposed, which is the pigment of a lot of people's imagination right now, is driving this unfortunately. So this will give us some time to perhaps develop some mechanisms to get out the correct information um, so that people can make an intelligent decision about how they feel about this overall.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, it's um, you know, I really do appreciate everybody taking the time to call and certainly, um, you know, they have very strong opinions, as they should, but when those opinions are rooted in things that appear to be, um, information that's, this Golden Basket thing has still been a mystery to me. I don't even know what's going on. Is there, I mean, nothing has come to, we don't even have any ordinances on the books. People stating we're gonna have twenty of these on Woodward. I mean, I think, one, that's in direct conflict with any and every single conversation we've had at this body. Um, and so I just really fear that people are getting worked up. Um, and, and I guess I'd get worked up too if I had a, a really bad set of facts. So, um, you know, I think it's good to, to spend some time to get the right information out there because we really need the public's input and we really need it based on, you know, factual information. Commissioner Dubach?
Thank you. I agree. That's a suggestion. There's clearly an organized effort to spread disinformation about this. And it's an important enough issue that we should ensure that the facts are out there. Um, and, and I think we should also be sharing out the links to the many public meetings that have been had, the many documents that have been shared out publicly, um, as well as the dozens of news articles that, that have been written as we've pursued this over the last year and a half plus. Um, and, and some of the key points of our conversation, we've discussed multiple times, uh, the need for a cap on top of the zoning ordinance. Clearly, those who are just seeking to inflame people are not sharing out all the information of where we as a body have been going. And I think we owe it to the residents to ensure uh, that we're countering deliberately misleading information.
Commissioner Gibbs?
I just have to say, none of you guys have Woodward Avenue in your backyard. I do. And I have a lot of concerns about all of these, the proposed ordinance that we have in front of us. I have a lot of concerns about it. So, please don't knock all of these callers that took time. Talk to people. Talk to their neighbors. Don't dismiss them and don't say that all of their information is wrong. It's very hurtful and I'm one of those people. I, I'm not one of the people that called. I'm one of the people that live there. It is my backyard.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Perush?
Commissioner Gibbs, I live closer to Woodward than you do and I have since nineteen seventy-five. Our first house was about a half a block away. We live now a block and a half away, which is much closer than you are. So, don't, don't admit or accuse us of saying we don't understand the people who live along Woodward. We don't understand their issues. We understand their issues. I live very close. I live closer than you do. But it doesn't make any difference. We all live in neighborhoods and we all want the neighborhoods protected. What's unfortunate about this is that there's been information circulated by people who supposedly should know better, um, that has significant errors in it. The idea that we're gonna have a whole string of, of marijuana businesses on Woodward is crazy. Especially since in work sessions, we pretty much decided that we want less than a handful in the whole city combined or the whole city area completely. And it, it certainly doesn't comport with the information that we've gotten from the planning department as to how many properties would actually be available for this type of facility on Woodward Avenue. It would come down to there are just a, a very few, given the parking requirements and the uh, the setback requirements and so on and so forth. Uh, and the idea that someone believes and is promoting the idea that the Golden Basket is on our table tonight is gonna be turned into this magnificent facility is just, it's just a pipe dream. So, um, unfortunately, there's a group out there who are making a very concerted effort to distribute a lot of misinformation about this. Um, the, the, the comments from the people who live along Woodward Avenue, they have legitimate concerns. I can understand why they're panicking, given the information that they've been fed. Um, but on the other hand, we have an obligation to provide the correct information and provide them with the facts. And so far, um, and so far, those facts have been distorted significantly.
Commissioner Macy?
I'm just wondering what Commissioner Gibbs is talking about when she says "you guys", since she, unlike all the people who called today, has been at every single meeting, has been at the hours of things that we have, times we have discussed this, and has never once said anything that's saying like, oh, we shouldn't have this on the Woodward corridor. And yet tonight she's shouting at us as if this is something she's been saying over the last year and a half of discussions. So, there's a lot of misinformation out there, but it shouldn't be in your head because you have been receiving the information and have been purporting to be somewhat of an expert on this, having worked in the industry. And yet, tonight, you're angry and I don't understand it.
Commissioner Macy, I'm gonna have to ask you not to, to specifically address Commissioner Gibbs' protocol. Thank you. Anybody else? I'll, I'll just add, you know, there's no dismissal of public comments. Quite the opposite. I mean, we care so much about what the public has to say, especially people in neighborhoods that would be impacted by any potential decision in the city, that we want them to be able to express their feelings and their thoughts and their fears and their ideas uh, in a way that's productive, not in a way that says the Golden Basket's going up or, you know, there's gonna be twenty of these on Woodward. That, that's, that's not the argument we're having. I mean, like Commissioner Perush said, we're talking about a handful throughout the entire city. Um, and to ignore the complete licensing ordinance part of this or whatever and just talk about cherry pick a few things out of a zoning thing without talking about how this whole thing gets pulled together and to discount the fact that we are probably the most conservative city um, when it has come to evaluating and taking our time looking at this in the whole area. I mean, Hazel Park, Ferndale, Madison Heights, you name all of our neighbors. They've been, already hashed all this out, figured it out, and they're doing their thing. We have purposely taken our time to make sure that we've had lots of forums for public input and that we have a lot of experts advising us and that we take cues from other cities to make sure that, you know, we balance the fact that some people aren't comfortable with this, but a majority of people want um, some sort of retail establishments in our city. And so I just want to make sure that we're getting the input, valuable input that we need. And I feel really badly for people who have been fed something that isn't completely true because it doesn't help us have the debates we need to have here. And that's, that's the missed opportunity here. All right. So I guess if there isn't anything else that needs to be said, um, I guess we can entertain a motion to adjourn. And, and one more reminder of the date again, Mr. Gillum, what did, or Mr. Brake, did we decide, was it July sixteenth?
Thursday, the sixteenth at six P M.
Got it. Perfect. Okay. All right. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn? Okay, Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, uh, supported by, or seconded by Commissioner Dubach. Discussion? Call for the vote, Commissioner?
Yes.
Commissioner Perush?
Yes.
Michelle Vassar?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We're adjourned. Good night, everyone. Stay safe, stay healthy. And we look forward to carrying on the city's business on Thursday. Take care.